This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All right. Okay, so welcome everybody. So tonight is a little bit different because we're going to roll call in and we are going to have the public hearing on the proposed 2023 budget. Then we are going to close the public hearing and begin the regular school committee meeting. Okay, so we'll roll call in twice. And we'll go on with the meeting. All right, so welcome and let's roll call in. So we have Maren.
Quick coming, Maren Goldstein here.
Lori.
Lori Garcia here.
Ben?
Ben Hershey here.
Megan?
Second Harvey here.
Mayor LaChapelle?
Mayor LaChapelle here.
And Cindy Kuzinski here. Okay, so we are going to open up the public hearing on the proposed school budget for 2023. And we are going to turn it over to Dr. Leclair and Dale.
Thank you. I'm going to start. Cindy, could I have the ability to share the screen?
Yep, I'll do that right now. There you go.
And while I'm putting the presentation up, I just want to acknowledge the, whoops, the finance subcommittee that's worked on this budget for quite some time. And also the mayor's office, I know they're going to be getting this next and this, we're just kind of partway through the process tonight. And I also want to acknowledge Dale, who is doing the budget presentation with me for the last time tonight. Because Dale will be retiring at the end of this year, so just want to thank Dale for everything that she's done to support me and support our district through the budget. And so now I'm going to start just a slideshow. Can you see that okay?
Yes.
And people, people that are in the room tonight or people that are watching, we'll post these slides tomorrow morning or I'm happy to share them with anyone via email. So I've already shared them with the committee. I showed them via email with you. But there's only a few slides. So my job tonight is to try and give you kind of the big picture. And Dale will get more into the nuts and bolts and she'll, she may jump in on some of these pieces with me. So let me start by giving everyone kind of an overview of our budget because our budget is so much more than just what the committee approves. There are different pieces that go into the development of the budget and I think it's important to understand that the city does provide the district with a significant amount of money. So the first two sections of this slide have an asterisk with them. It's called the city share and the chapter 70 state aid. And there's a, there's a site that you can find this information on is down below. So we are given preliminary information usually around January of what our chapter 70 funding will be. And you can see in this graph, I've identified what our FY 21 and 22 chapter 70 aid was and what this year's FY 23 preliminary chapter 70 aid is. It's preliminary because the governor has not passed the budget yet. In addition to that, the Department of Ed, again, that site below, also identifies the minimum requirement for the city. So that's the minimum, the city share is the minimum amount that the city is required to set aside for our budget. And what I would say is historically, the city of East Hampton has provided more than that amount. And so what you'll see down below, the required minimum, you can see what that is, what it has been for the past few years. It's currently $21,391,869 for this year. And the city of East Hampton, historically in the past two years, has given us $23 million and $22 million, which has been more than the minimum contribution. So I think it's, you know, I've seen information that the city doesn't give us enough money. And believe me, the mayor will tell you I'm the first in line to beg for more money. But you know, credit where credit is due, the city has given us more money in the last few years. Now, that doesn't necessarily come directly into the coffers of the school department, but it's for services that we take part in. Like on the city side, they do our trash removal, our plowing, things like that. They also have, our payroll person works for the city. There are HR functions, unemployment and such that go through the city. So those are kind of added to the budget and the city, that's the total net school spending amount. And that's really what I think is a fair number to demonstrate. And I know the mayor shares that out in the big budget book, but we've never really shared that out in this meeting. So I think it's really important to help people understand that there's more to the budget than just the amount of money we're asking for. We don't have our own HR department. I'm the HR person and my assistant Sue Colby is the HR person. But we rely quite a bit on the HR department downstairs in City Hall. So for example, those are, those are services that we rely on from the city. And just stop me if you have questions. So what we're presenting tonight is a needs-based or essential services budget. So really, we're looking at what the needs are as we move into this new school. What the needs are looking at coming out of a pandemic. What the needs are for the decreased enrollment that we've seen in our community. And that's what we're basing our budget on. So this is a proposal coming to the school committee that reflects our needs and our priorities as identified by the district in accordance with our goals and areas of focus. This seeks to maintain or improve the level of services provided to all East Hampton students in FY 23 as compared to FY 22. It includes the costs that are known or projected based on current information. And this is one that results from a consolidation of four schools into one, identifying some efficiencies and a realignment of need as indicated by the building's inception. I want to make clear that years ago, when this building was first being, you know, really seriously discussed, focus groups were held. And at those focus groups, it was identified that there would be savings through a consolidation of schools and there would be efficiencies. I have notes, I was not here in the district at that time, but I have notes specifically that there would be a consolidation of positions. For example, one that's clearly noted is decreasing an administrator moving into the new building. So there was never a guarantee that every position would be maintained. So I want to be clear because I think there's some misinformation about that. So the consolidation, just to give people a little bit of context, we're hoping to, well, we know we will see less building maintenance will be expected because we're moving out of four old schools to one new school. Less frequent building systems and equipment breakdowns and need for repair, contracted service maintenance, parts expense, emergency response. Those are all things that we've struggled with in the last few years. Lower utility costs, ground maintenance savings, we'll talk about that after. There's a potential for food service savings currently out to bid, but we're going from multiple sites down to two sites to have food service. Custodial supply savings, reduce plowing and trash removal expenses on the city side. They've maintained plowing and trash removal in all our buildings and now we'll go down to two buildings. So we're hoping that there'll be efficiencies there. I thought I would also share the enrollment, just a picture for you of our enrollment to demonstrate what the last nine years have looked like. We have seen a significant decline in enrollment. This is, I've said it before, it's not unique to East Hampton. This is a trend at the state and national level. Enrollments are declining. People are waiting later in life to have families or people are having smaller families. There's a variety of reasons. But enrollment has been declining. And we had the biggest hit during the early months of the pandemic, during the year, right after the pandemic started. And it's gone up a little bit, but we've been holding steady in the low 1400s. So this is the, into the class sizes. So I wanted to share that out. For kindergarten, we're anticipating about 80 students. That will be our smallest kindergarten class ever. And again, it's demonstrating smaller class numbers in the earlier grades. We think this is the beginning of a trend towards that lower enrollment. Cindy, you have all these slides. You don't have to juggle.
I still will always, I like to get this, we go forward.
I can go back, I can go back to any of these after.
I got them.
So let's talk a little bit about some of the reductions that are being put forward in this budget. As I mentioned, the efficiencies that were discussed or the consolidation or reduction of positions that were discussed years ago in focus groups held when we were thinking about this school, we are decreasing one administrator. We will need one less building administrator. That person has a job in the district and moving into a different position, going back into a classroom position. So we're not laying anyone off. There'll be, oh, sorry, I skipped ahead. There'll be one less administrative assistant, which we believe will be reduced through attrition, through someone leaving the district by their own choice. We'll also be reducing an administrative assistant at the high school. We have a retirement and we'll be shifting some positions there. And we're doing that at the high school because of decreased enrollment at the high school as well. We're looking at reducing three elementary classroom teachers. Those will be in the smallest sized grade levels. So the grade levels with the lowest numbers. We can predict what those are right now, but we want to have the flexibility to watch the numbers and see if students return in certain grades and, and where we want to put the classroom teachers and where we need to reduce. We want to watch the numbers. One elementary music teacher, that's always been the plan. We have a person in a long-term subposition right now. And that person will move on. Two lunchroom monitors, we're moving from four cafeterias down to two cafeterias. So there's an efficiency that we can gain there. 9.2 paraeducators because we're anticipating now with the larger building, we have the opportunity to add more of our substantially separate specialized programs. And so we are trading some paraeducators for professional staff. So you'll see some additions on the next page. We'll be reducing half a custodian. Again, that's an efficiency moving from four buildings down into one building. And one custodian will be reallocated or reassigned to be a groundskeeper. We've never had someone to maintain our grounds, but with this beautiful new setting in the grounds that we have, we really feel that's important. And an LPN that's retiring, that will not be replaced. Again, when we consolidate into the new school, we will have two BSNs and one LPN in the nurses suite and we feel that that's appropriate. It meets all measures of appropriate nursing standards. Anyone have any questions on those reductions? Or do you want me to wait until the end? Ben, go ahead.
I was just curious, you said that the, the three elementary classroom teachers would be reduced from the lowest the lowest enrolled grades.
Right.
So I think that was K, was that K through two or something? I'm just curious.
Right now, it looks like it's K two. But again, K is, we need to wait a little while longer. You know, there could be, K is unknown to us. We base our preliminary estimate on live birth rates in the community of East Hampton and we look at those long range. It's, it seems low. But I think it's, it's fair to say that we want to wait and see. And we could have a mass exodus of fourth graders, for example. We just don't know.
Let me see.
Yeah.
I'm curious, just, I want you to keep going for sure, but I'm, I'm wondering, like you mentioned that some people would be moved around a little bit, that there'd be some shifting of positions. And I'd love to hear more at some point about whether or not the three elementary teachers are in that class of people who could be moved around, but.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So let me show you the next slide. That might answer some of your questions.
Thank you.
Yep. So new positions that are coming on board. Middle school librarian, which we added mid-year this year through a grant. And we'll be moving that into our school district budget. And that's new to us. We haven't had a librarian in many years. So that is a professional staff position. And an elementary school librarian. So we're taking, we've had, at the elementary schools, we've had paraeducators serving as library assistants. And now we are going to have librarians, professional staff in those roles. So that's how we're, you know, shifting some things. So we'll have an elementary school librarian, which will be grant funded. A pre-K teacher. So we shifted some paraeducator positions around to fund the pre-K teacher. So that's a professional position. And one of the three positions that we're going to be reducing in the elementary classrooms might have the appropriate license. It's a pre-K through two license. So someone may want that position. We have a special education teacher position that again, through shifting of elementary paraeducator funding, we're hiring a special education teacher, someone that, one of those three teachers may have that license and want to move into that position. We have, we also have one resignation right now in an elementary grade effective for July 1st for next year. Just someone that's moving out of the area. And we have two retirements in the lower elementary grades. So I want to say that clearly.
Allison, if I may interject here, I was just going to emphasize that the pre-K teacher will reestablish a full day option at the pre-K level, which we haven't had for a couple of years.
Yes.
And is, is something that the community needs. So we're really happy that we're going to be able to do that.
Thank you, Dale.
Yeah.
And, and to piggyback on what Dale said, to address social emotional needs, this is one of the areas that we feel strongly that we need to have a full day option at pre-K to address some of our youngest students that are experiencing challenges. So that was an area of focus for us. The speech and language pathologist, 1.5, we're shifting contract service funding. We've had that in a contract service with an outside provider. Now we're shifting the funding to our district budget and we're going to hire our own people. So we're hoping that that will be a more beneficial, they can see more students because they'll be here more on site. They'll work exclusively for us. A STEM teacher, excuse me, is grant funded. That's going to be K eight position for science. Again, an area of focus that we've had for several years trying to build on our science standards. A social emotional coordinator is.
Allison, the other thing I just wanted to point out to people relative to the STEM teacher is we have in our, we have in the new middle school on each of the wings in each grade level, one amounts to a STEM lab, a maker space. So it helps us start to build that curriculum and, and use those spaces to have somebody who's licensed in that content area to work with our teachers and also to build curriculum.
Yes. And I think it's important to note that this building provides us the opportunity to have some spaces to grow some programs that we could never dream of doing in the small overcrowded schools that we had. Adding another special education classroom, we had no space to do that in any of our other, in any of our other schools. You know, having a place for a STEM teacher, having an extra pre-K classroom. You know, these are all things that were just not part of the plan when we were in the smaller buildings. But now that we're in the larger building, we can do these things and focus on some of these significant needs. The social emotional coordinator will be grant funded. That person will be housed in our Mountain View School again to focus on the social emotional needs with, of youngest students and to work with families and staff on trying to address issues that arise. We're adding a high school adjustment counselor. That's grant funded. Even though enrollment has decreased at the high school, the social emotional challenges have been rising. So we want to recognize that it is a universal problem, K-12, and we want to make sure we are adding supports at all levels in that area. We're adding a Title I paraeducator. Again, this may be a place where a paraeducator currently in another role moves into a Title I role. This is grant funded. And we've recently added an instructional technology technician. It is grant funded. But I do want to note that the focus of that position, it was not part of last year's budget. The focus of that position is to address technology needs in our new school. So those are all positions that are going to be evident in our schools, you know, starting next year, or some of them have already just started. Lori, did you have a question? And I can't, I can only see like four people. So tell me if.
I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time, but I do want to say that it's no secret that I've been pushing to expand not only our world language program, but also to start a dual immersion program. So I'm very happy to see these new positions, but I really want to make people aware that we don't have any middle school world language program, which is deleterious to the language benefits of our high school students for professions, for colleges, for travel, for just being good global citizens. So I don't know if this is the appropriate time to once again put that out there that all these new positions have been created and it's wonderful, but the language still hasn't been expanded.
I agree. It is, it is a deficit. And I think that a few years ago, we tried to bring something back and we could not find anyone to staff it. So we ended up going with, going down a different path. And we had, we brought health back to the middle school, which I think is also valuable. So I think there's not one program that's more valuable than another. I think they're all really important. Are there other questions about the new positions? Okay. I also thought it was important to identify other sources of funding that we in the district rely on that add to our budget. So I've identified some of the larger grants that we receive. And these are also what we would call entitlement grants. They are guaranteed every year for us, the first four. So let me just tell you what they are. The SED 240 grant is currently funding occupational therapists, special education teachers, half of the SEL coordinator, some social emotional consultation and other things. We have three reading specialists in Title I. We have our instructional coach for literacy in our Title II A and we pay for mentor stipends. In Title IV, we do a lot with tutors, supplies, professional development. The next one is our ESER III allocation. That's our COVID money. That's not a reoccurring grant, although we've had ESER I, ESER II and ESER III. We will be using ESER III money exclusively next year. Our ESER I and ESER II will be gone at the end of this year. We'll be using that to fund staffing and it's more, I delineated in the next slide. We also use Circuit Breaker, which is a recurring funding source from the state that helps offset some of the special education costs that become excessive in a school district. For example, an out of district student placement that might be a few hundred thousand dollars for one student. Circuit Breaker helps to offset that for us. And the other one is our revolving accounts, which is our fees, bus fees, parking fees, athletic fees. It's also our school choice account. And this year, more than ever, we are, we are allocating a substantial amount to offset the budget or to assist with the budget of over a million dollars. And that's because we've been really quite conservative with our school choice funds and we usually allocate between, I would say probably four to $800,000 each year. But this year, because we've had, been very conservative in some of the things that we've done, we're, we're putting more money forward because we know that we have a big ask this year.
I was going to, to mention that we have not collected any fees over the pandemic period. So those accounts have not had any revenue for a couple of years. And they are, we have to be very careful in how we use them next year. We're hopeful that next year we will be able to start to collect transportation fees, user fees and tuition again, because families will be in a better position to pay them. That's our hope anyway.
And to break down the COVID, ESER III grant a little bit more. These are all of the things that it's funding. It's primarily going to be used for staffing. It helps us with quite a few positions that we have in the district and professional development and some supplies. And you've seen some of these things identified in previous slides, but this kind of tells, we said grant funded, but this gives you an idea of which grant funded them. And so what we're looking for, basically you can see the top three lines. What our budget has been the past few years, we've had a few lean years. In FY 21, we had a zero change budget, which was the same as the previous year, $17,500. Last year, we had a budget of $17,097,693, which is a, which was a 2.5% decrease. This year, we're asking for a proposed budget of $18,450,907, which is an increase of $1,353,000, $214, or 7.91%. or seven point nine one percent, which we know is excessive. We know that's a lot to ask, but to break it down, there are some fixed costs that are occurring this year that have really challenged us. So we're trying to show you what that is. Five hundred thousand dollars is for tuition. That's a fixed cost. We have students that apply to go to vocational programs and there seems to be a trend for students to seek out vocational programs. And I, I don't know if that's a national trend or not, but we are seeing an increase in that. We use CTEC as our primary vocational school and also Smith-Vogue and they have set tuitions that we have to pay. And that's showing us a two point nine three percent increase. Transportation, what I think everyone expected is that when we move into the new school, we're going to have more than double the number of students that qualify for transportation. And so we need to have five additional buses to transport all the students that qualify. So that's a four hundred and ninety three thousand dollar increase in our transportation, which is a two point eight eight percent increase of the budget. And then everything else, which is some fixed cost, like utilities and things like that, but it's also some discretionary costs. It's our salaries. Everything else, salaries, supplies, that, excuse me, is an ask of three hundred and fifty nine thousand dollars or a two point one percent increase. Any questions on that page? So finally, we've got our operating budget, which is the eighteen million that we're proposing. We have our grants. We have our ESER Three money. We have our Circuit Breaker money and we have our revolving accounts. So that gives you an idea of the total budget for the East Hampton Public Schools, which is twenty two million three hundred and twenty five thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. We are asking the school committee to approve the operating budget of eighteen million four hundred and fifty thousand nine hundred and seven dollars. And Dale, I'm going to stop the share. And Dale's going to get into some of the nuts and bolts of the figures and either one of us can answer any questions that you might have along the way.
So my comments are going to be directed at the pages that fall on, behind tab four, which is, it starts with the overview of the operating budget. And I'll, I'll simply say that it, it's about a page and a half. It's right at the beginning of that section. Not quite a page and a half. I, I'm just directing folks' attention to it because it's a really good sort of overview of the budget process, which we've been engaged in since late fall. And also the principles that we adhere to in building the budget. And then there's a, a pretty good summary of the recent budget trends and the components of the increase that is being requested this year. So I would encourage people to take a look at that. And then the other thing that I was going to just speak about briefly is the page that's titled East Hampton Public Schools Fiscal Year Twenty Three Proposed Operating Budget, Proposed Budget Summary Page. What that, this page does is it breaks down the overall increase by location. And people who have been doing this for a while, like me, will remember that we previously had six budget locations. And because of the consolidation this year, we're going to four budget locations, because Center Pepin School, Maple and Whitebrook all become one budget in the fiscal year twenty three budget. And, and that proposed, posed some challenges in terms of building the budget. It also poses some challenges in making an apples to apples comparison the previous year to this year. And I, I'll explain a little bit more about that later. But the first location is the system budget and that contains all of the district administration costs and any non-special education costs that cut across all schools. Things like transportation, for example. That budget shows an increase of three point four three percent. All of that increase can be attributed to something that Allison spoke about a little earlier. And that is that we needed to budget for increased tuitions. And two different kinds of tuition, she spoke a little bit about the vocational. We have a, a good number of additional students as compared to this year applying to vocational, vocational school next year. So we had to budget for those tuitions. The other tuitions that we saw a pretty healthy increase in that is in this budget is the special education tuitions. And that happens a couple of different ways. One is there, one way that it could happen is if there are students that have moved into the district this year who are placed in out of district placements that we didn't budget for this year, but we will have to for next year. And the, the other is that on occasion, students are placed in different placements by agencies in whose custody they are that are more expensive than the ones that they're currently in. And we needed to accommodate for those more expensive placements next year. So that was, that was one component of the increase in the system budget. And the other is transportation, which the superintendent spoke about. Because of the consolidation of, of the schools, a number of students who currently don't qualify for bus transportation, primarily elementary schools, because they live in the neighborhoods of their elementary schools, under the existing policy will qualify for transportation next year. We did a study this fall with our current transportation provider to try to project the number of additional kids and the number of additional buses that would be required. And it was five buses. So one of the things that's mitigating against this increase being far more than it is is that we are applying an additional three hundred and twenty five thousand dollars worth of the choice revenue to blunt the impact of that on the budget. As, as the superintendent said, in, in the last several years, we've applied between four and eight hundred thousand dollars of choice revenue this year. When we started building the budget, we anticipated applying six hundred and seventy five thousand. And ultimately, the budget calls for us to apply about a million dollars, exactly a million dollars. That's a system budget. The Mountain View budget shows an increase of twelve point three four percent. But that's a little bit deceptive. And the reason that it is, is that in last year's budget, there were services, instructional services, instructional staff that were shared between buildings that were budgeted in the district budget. And now because they're going to be fully all the time in one building at Mountain View, they were moved into the Mountain View budget. And the same thing happened with some services and staffing that was in the special ed budget in fiscal year twenty two. They got moved into Mountain View because now those services are fully borne by, within the walls of the Mountain View School. So when I say you can't make an apples to apples comparison, this is the prime example of it, Mountain View. It really is comparing apples and oranges. The East Hampton High School budget is up three point six percent. You can make an apples to apples comparison there. It's the, it's the only one that you can. And then the special ed budget is up nine point three seven percent. And the reason for that increase is the special ed tuitions that I mentioned prematurely in my explanation of the systems budget and additional transportation costs to transport students who are entitled to special transportation in their IEP. There are more of them. There is more supervision needed on the buses. And the, the costs are increasing next year and all of that converged to drive the special ed budget up. So that's the, that's the nuts and bolts of it. I'm happy to answer any questions that people have in regards to it, if there are questions. Following that, you will see each of the location budgets giving a line by line accounting of the budgeting in every line by location. And at the finance subcommittee level, they, they went over each of those with a fine tooth comb. But I'm not going to belabor that this evening unless people have specific questions.
Yeah, maybe I can step in and just speak really quickly before other questions are asked. I just want to speak up as the finance chair subcommittee. I think that it's really important to just sort of reemphasize a few things that both Dr. Leclerc and Allison and Dale mentioned. You know, our subcommittee met for a number of weeks to review these. We definitely dug in, like you said, line by line to really make certain that we really understood what was there, why things were shifting. And as you mentioned, there's a lot of changes in this year as we consolidate into a single school for our pre-K through eight buildings. And so that's a pretty huge impact then on how the budgets adjust, both the system budget changes, the single school budget changes. There's a lot of adjustments that are happening in there. So I think that's a really important piece. And I think that the other piece that I just want to reemphasize too, there's been a lot of communication to our school committee this year by engaged parents. And so that's excellent, people learning and wanting to speak up for making sure that we get good funding and have good programs. Is that part of what's happening again with this move to a single building is that that consolidation gives us the opportunity to really look at what we want to do and how we want to offer the best services we can to our students. It doesn't mean we can do everything and there's still opportunities to grow, things like Laurie was mentioning before, adding more language back in. That's something we can look to do in the future as we continue, continue to sort of balance into this new budget and this new building format. But I think that that's, we were able to do a lot of other things. And I think the special education piece that we're able to do is a critical part of that. And I just want to take a moment to step out of the budget discussion and think about the building. So one of the things that the school building enables us to do from this old school that the elementary schools, each classroom was a different size, each classroom had, you know, we were doing a pullout oftentimes for students to get a reading assistance. They were going and sitting in chairs in the hallway, right? There, the services that we were able to do in our previous school years was much more limited. And in this new building now, not only do we have, not only is each, every single classroom a much larger square footage for that classroom. We also have additional classrooms that we're able to do specialty classrooms with. We're able to do these really, we have really wonderful pullout spaces where students will still be in a private space with that teacher, being able to work on math or reading or whatever it is. And like was already mentioned, there's a STEM space that's available as well. So there's so much opportunity that this new building gave that we needed to not just say, oh, well, there's three teachers in this grade, so we're going to have three teachers in this grade. This was an opportunity for us to look at what is the best services we can provide to our students and adjust to that. So that's what we've done. And definitely at the finance committee level, we looked at it line by line and made sure that we understood and supported in the end this budget that's coming forward to you. So I just think that that's a really important understanding that got to us to this budget. One of the other things that I just wanted to mention too, definitely people are looking at, how do we fund our budget? And I think that Dr. Leclerc showed three years worth of our budget, sort of showing that, you know, FY twenty one had a zero percent budget. FY twenty two had a negative two point five percent budget. Before that, in FY twenty and FY nineteen, we had a one point seven nine and a one point seven six percent budget. So if you now combine all five years and look at the trajectory of what our budget is and understand that one of the biggest drivers of our budget costs is labor and our union and our contracts that have a two percent increase built in that we've negotiated with them that we get close to with this new budget request, we get close to up to that two percent. We'd actually over five years now puts us back to a one point seven nine percent growth each year. And that gets us back in alignment with where we need to be as a healthy district and a healthy school funded district by the city. And so that's why there's plenty of fixed costs that was already mentioned about why we have to ask for such a large increase, but it also, this large increase is also there because this puts us back in alignment with a healthy, healthy trajectory of where we are. The other thing, last thing that I want to just mention that hasn't been mentioned so far. The transportation costs are going up, food costs are going up. This budget also really reflects, as we all personally know, that inflation is happening in a large way right now and it is directly impacting this budget and we have to find ways to fit those and, and work those inflation costs into this budget the best we can. And I just want to finally say that I think this has been through a lot of work, a lot of review from every, from the very first steps with Dr. Leclerc's leadership team to Dale and Allison working on it and making sure all the things really line up and to the finance subcommittee, working with them to really make sure it's all on the best track we can get. So I just want to put firmly the finance committee's stamp of approval and support of this budget.
One of the things that I would like to mention sort of as a postscript is Dr. Leclerc mentions some operating efficiencies that we are expecting to experience in the new building. And I wanted to assure people that they were factored in. We reduced the utility lines. We reduced the contracted maintenance of building lines. It's contracted equipment lines. All of those lines have been reduced. And we reduced them based on, our design team was very helpful in that they projected expected savings for us. But as you might expect, without having actual experience in the building, our hope is those savings projections are on the conservative side and that once we're in the building a year and have a year's experience in the building, there would be room to sharpen the pencil and potentially pare some of those lines down further, hopefully.
One last thing I would like to interject here too, is that I think one of the, one of those efficiencies, and we've all sort of mentioned pieces of it too, is the special education program. This is an opportunity that we're making a slight adjustment to how we do our special education program. And you can see that through the positions that we're reducing and adding. And I would like to invite Sarah Mochek, the director of our special education program, just to give like a, a two minute overview of, of that sort of adjustment. And that we're also just going to put out the request that actually we would love to have you come back to do a more thorough presentation on special education later in the spring, when we have more time for it. But if you could give just a two minutes sort of overview on that, on the adjustments that you see and how this is actually going to be improving the services that we're providing to our students in the district.
Sure. Thank you, Maran, for inviting me to speak. So I've had, you know, I think many of you know, I've had the pleasure of working in the district for a number of years. This is my, I'm finishing my seventh year as director and we have, over the past seven years, been able to create some really wonderful programs for our students with, with the most significant needs and you know, shift how we do things. And one of the biggest constraints that we had in providing services for students was, was our buildings and was the lack of space in our buildings. So and, and so I'll start, I'll, I'll, I think there's three things that I want to share with you. One is, is we are, we have seen an increase in the number of, of students at, at three years old who need special education services. And, you know, I was thinking a lot about that when And, you know, I was thinking a lot about that when Dr. Leclerc was talking about our enrollment. And I don't think it's reflective of an increased enrollment. I think the number of students with needs is just that. It's it's more students with with more significant needs. So adding that full day preschool back in that we we eliminated a couple of years ago helps and helps our students in that year before kindergarten really get ready so they can build up that stamina for being in a school all day long, gives us double the amount of time to work with them in whatever ways that they they need us to. So that that's preschool. We're also looking to create, so at the middle school, we have a language-based learning disabilities program. We really need that at the younger grades. Space has prevented us from being able to do that. Our special education teachers were providing wonderful services, but this allows us to provide more appropriate services. And, you know, give us more bang for our buck, as 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 might be said. At each of the three elementary schools, there's one special education teacher. So at Maple, at Center, and at Pepin, there's just one academic special education teacher. And that person is responsible for the academic special education services for that entire school, K to four, K to four. So there, so sometimes their caseloads are as high as twenty eight students. And that is, you know, disproportionately higher than our neighbors, our neighboring districts. So moving into this school, it allows us to reconfigure how we're providing services to our to our students. And and then, so the learning disabilities program and as Dr. Leclerc highlighted numerous times, the social emotional needs of our students, and this is not unique to East Hampton, have increased significantly over the past several years, more so now than ever. I, I, you know, my guess probably is similar to yours, that it's, you know, really related to the pandemic and students coming out of that. But the reconfiguration allows us to create two small social emotional programs. We have one that services students in grades one to four. But state regulation prevents us from making that a K to four program because students cannot be more than forty eight months apart in a program. And so this adding an additional program allows us to create a K to two social emotional program and a three to five social emotional program. So it really, it, 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 you know, it just allows us to do a better job. We already do a really wonderful job. I'm you know, impressed by our staff on a daily basis. But this really allows them to bring us to that next level of excellence.
Now, the mayor has her hand raised.
Yes, thank you, Chair. So I also just wanted to kind of talk about the net school spending and other expenditures that have changed. Some has come off net school spending. So one, I gotta get my notes here. So so slowly we've been chipping away, knowing this new school has been coming. So even though it doesn't seem like a big thing, for example, a couple of years back, Rep. Syback got us an earmark for a lawn mower that Park and Rec uses and it it has reduced their lawn mowing time to about three fourths and less gas. Also, IT operations were split, still being split. And the charges to the school district and the expense and more control over IT operations is now more within the school department and less influence around the city's needs, which I I think, you know, we've we've learned over the last several years. One is an awkward marriage of departments, but also the schools, you know, the schools' needs and the cities' needs are are very different. And that said, the city, quite often, if not all the time, our IT expenses are more expensive because the city can't get educational discounts and the schools can. So I I think that that, and I think that will become, we'll see those savings more in the coming fiscal year and going on. The also the the other thing I would say is that the SRO, who's not a grant funded SRO, will not be captured, which would be salary plus benefits, will not be captured by net school spending in the coming year because we don't have an SRO. So that's a big, that's a big reduction on net school spending. On the other side of it, also in the cities with the first dispersment of care money to the city got it a little quicker than the schools, not much. We didn't know what was going to happen. We transferred William transfer, we actually put a down payment on Chromebooks because the backup time was ridiculous. I think, I think it still took the better part of the school year to get them, but that was a hundred and sixty four thousand. And also our base benefit for retirees, the thirty B, thirty two B, we increased that base budget. The council just voted it in from fourteen thousand to sixteen thousand because the last increase the retirees got from school and and from city was in twenty fifteen. And I would remind people that if you work in a public system, you don't necessarily get social security benefit unless at some point in your career you work outside, especially schools. So that was, I hope that gets fixed soon, but that that's a big bump up. I mean, that's just what it is. And the school is, I mean, the city's experiencing that as well. There is still, I got notification today and maybe the superintendent has even more information that the state is going to release more of the ARPO money that they have control over specifically to school departments and school districts. Representative Carey didn't have like if they were going to use a formula or was competitive, I believe it'll be a formula. So that's supposed to be coming before the beginning of the next school year. Also, the last thing I I would say is the governor's budget is is out. It comes out in January. Like the city, we kind of plug it in and play around with that number, but we know it's going to change. I would say that this year, with no disrespect to the, to the governor, he's a lame duck and what I've been told by our legislative lobbyists from MMA that that budget is basically shredded and they're going to up. Oh, chapter ninety and chapter seventies, chapter seventy is education using the surplus in the state budget. But so those budget those budget amounts, we, you know, hopefully we'll get a sense of it in April from the House and then it'll go to the Senate in May. But they're trying very hard to deliver. So that's just kind of a a little bit from our side of it and what it looks like. And then we'll, we'll go for that. But I would expect formula money, which means we don't have to be competitive. And then they'll with the school, the school department, and then there would be competitive, which I think everybody can see on this budget and the slideshow that the school department's very good at getting grants. So that's, I I just wanted to add that. I have a technical question, but I can wait for later in the discussion. That's all I had.
Thank you, Megan.
Yeah, I, thank you. I had a question for Sarah, if it's possible to get some clarification on on one of the things that you said. So thank you for that information about sort of how it's set up right now and the caseloads. I wondered if you had any insight into with the proposed budget, what the caseload would be for special education teachers at Mountain View if under this like new proposed budget? Maybe I'll ask that one first and then I'll ask a follow up.
It it's a little bit difficult to say at the moment because we haven't quite determined how, I'm still working with Dr. Pesquini-Torkia about how we will, you know, assign roles. But I think that my, my best guess today would be that caseloads would be you know, between eighteen and twenty two. And there may be some shared, shared caseloads, like one of the scenarios that we're thinking about is having maybe two special education teachers assigned to two grades. So there may be, you know, thirty six students assigned to those two teachers. But maybe one would specialize in reading, one would specialize in math. You know, we're just not sure, but I think, I think eighteen to twenty two is is a reasonable guess at the moment.
Thank you. And is that a caseload that you would say allows for appropriate management of these cases? Do we, would an ideal caseload be a little smaller? Like what, how does that sort of line up to?
I I haven't done, you know, I haven't done a poll, you know, with my colleagues in other districts and, you know, maybe in the last couple of years. But I think that, you know, thinking back to a couple of years ago, I think that that's commensurate with what what other districts do. And I think that 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 is really manageable. What makes it the most manageable is that our special education teachers could focus on specific grades, one or two grades as opposed to five.
Great, thank you. Now I have a similar but different question about the special education paraprofessionals. So one of the things that we've gotten a lot of questions about that has really had me thinking about our proposed budget and sort of deductions and the additions in a new way is sort of what the role of special education teachers would be compared to special education paraprofessionals? And I wondered if you had any insight into sort of, I don't even know if this is exactly the right way to ask the question, but what would be the the ratio of students who have IEPs with our paraprofessionals now versus what would that ratio be with this reduction of nine point two paras? Does that make sense?
It does. And I I think I'd have to really dig a little bit deeper into that. I don't know if it's as simple as a ratio because those, you know, the paraprofessional, a lot of our paraeducators are assigned to specific programs and they do shift year to year depending on the needs of our students. So I I can look at that and and get back to you about that. I I'm just, I'm not sure. I wouldn't be fair for me to, for me to expect.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Laurie?
And my question was to piggyback on that about the para reduction in the number. But I also was so pleased when touring the school that I saw those phenomenal breakout rooms. Sarah, and I'm wondering if part of the reason that we can reduce the number of paras is because they can pull out kids from both classes that share that space and have a para work with different students from those different classes? Was that thought of in this reduction?
I, I, yeah, for sure. I think that having those breakout spaces, I think a lot of the rooms have, you know, one that, you know, one space might be shared by two or three classrooms. You know, it really does allow us to configure the classrooms a little bit differently and allow, you know, with with four or five classrooms per grade, you know, it's much easier to pull a pull a group that might need to work on a similar, need similar assistance or work on a similar task.
That's what I was hoping you'd say because as Megan acknowledged, you know, there are a lot of people who have written to us in the past couple of days, people who have very valid concerns. But I believe that our new school is much more suitable to be able to handle the caseload in a different way than in the small spaces we presently have. So thank you for answering that. And thank you for for all you do for our district.
Thank you.
All right. Any more questions, Mayor?
So I I guess this is a good time given Meg's inquiry. So when I go on the DESI data, the DESI data dashboard for our district and I'm looking at I'm looking to a student to teacher ratio. So I I went I went back to twenty seventeen. And we're looking at thirteen point three students to each teacher. And then in twenty twenty one, we went to twelve point five per teacher compared to the state average till twelve point one. So I guess my question is, that's a much different number than what I have read from a lot of parents and I thank them for the input. But also what what I heard and tried to figure out. So I was a little surprised when I got on the data dashboard and saw that number in comparison to even some of the numbers we have here. So I was pleasantly surprised. But but I just, I wanted to ask about that in this meeting because it confused me.
I think that part of the answer to that is when you look at kindergarten, not kindergarten, high school classes, some of our highest high school classes have low enrollments because they're more specialized. Like an AP chemistry class might have eight students in it, you know. So but that gets averaged in. And we might have, and on the flip side, at the high school as well, and this is just an example because these are where kids can sign up for classes. You might have a math class for students that are very struggling in the area of math. And the principal at the high school would want to keep that class size low as well. So you might have ten students in that classroom. But if it gets averaged across the district, you know, it impacts it. Our kindergarten classes are always very small, purposely so. So, you know, when you average across grade levels, you know, next year's incoming freshman class is only eighty six students. So that's going to really impact all freshman classes. They're going to be low numbers. So you know, when you, when you average all the classes out, some, some of our classes are, do have low enrollment and that impacts the overall number that you're seeing on that DART dashboard.
And that's what it's called, the DART dashboard. All right. So a quick follow up. So as we see those numbers go down in high school, is there a possibility or I wouldn't even say a possibility, everything's so unknown that the the dis, the department would take a look at who's certified in the high school and if they have middle school and switch to where where more numbers are to to kind of lessen the impact, even if it was a co-teaching model. I know that that's a really effective way for for some populations. So I'm just, I I saw a little bit of switch of staff and whatnot or asking somebody to get a waiver for middle school when they taught in high school and stuff like that. So I I don't know if that's a part of the calculation or that's even allowed by DESI.
Yes, it is allowed. If you have the license, it's allowed. You know, we, we are challenged at the high school because and I know Mr. Evans here is is on tonight. You know, we want to maintain an appropriate course selection to be attractive to students. We need a certain number of electives. We need to have foreign language. We need a variety of science classes. And, you know, there are all different kinds of certifications. You might, English teachers at the high school, for example, all have a nine twelve English certification. But in science, you need to have specific science certifications like biology or chemistry. So, you know, you want to be a competitive high school. You want to attract students and offer a variety of AP courses and specialized. You want to attract students and offer a variety of AP courses and specialized courses. So. It's very hard for us to make more reductions at the high school unless we decide to. Go to a more virtual aspect, like offer AP virtually for students through VHS. Where they, you know, are logging into. A AP course that's offered throughout the state for students. But we're not there yet. I mean, we want to keep, we want to keep our high schools strong with our own internal teachers. So. That's a direction we haven't really, you know, bit the bullet and moved in yet. So I I think we're just, we're keeping an eye on it.
So one more follow up question and then I'm done. So the VH, that model actually reminds me. So do we have dual enrollment with HCC? So if somebody wants to take a specific course that's not offered at the high school, they can go to HCC. To to get that.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, that's it.
I've taught many East Hampton students, actually. Could I ask a follow up? This is maybe built on the mayor's question. I was, would love to hear. A bit more about class sizes. That was a big concern that came through with emails in the last few days. Like I think maybe one of the top two. Worries. And I just wondered if you could just break that down a little bit around kind of the distribution of, you know, the numbers and classes.
Yep. So a- as a district, I think that we have prioritized keeping class sizes. Low over the years. There's a historical perspective you can look at. There is developmentally, there are, there are reasons to keep class sizes smaller. At the lower elementary grades. If you look at many surrounding communities, you'll see. That there's usually an uptick in numbers around fourth grade and up. Not huge, but depending on different communities, they usually, once students have an ability to read that they. You know, are usually fluent around third grade. By the time they get to fourth grade, we can have a little bit of a higher class size. But this community has still managed to keep class sizes low. The rub for us is that. In East Hampton is that we're moving into a building that was built. According to MSBA standards, which is the Mass School Building Authority. And the class sizes for the classrooms that we have are twenty-four students. At the, at the elementary level. So that's the the capacity for the classrooms. And, you know, I think we'll be alright for the next few years, but there may come a time if enrollment starts creeping up again. In East Hampton, if more families move into the community, where we may have to take a hard look at. The actual class sizes that were identified through the MSBA. You know, I think there's something to be said for trying to keep class sizes small if we can. But there may come a time when we're not able to do that. I don't think it's going to be. In the next few years, but I think there will come a time.
Mayor, did you have another question? You're on mute.
Um, so also just referring back to the past year budgets and. You know, my budget letter and directions of of what the increase was and and all of that. There was also a very specific reason I did that to the chagrin of many departments. Because we needed to go for a bond rating and we needed to get it up two steps for that, for that bond for the school. And we saved. Millions and millions of dollars over the course of the bond, but immediately. We have saved in the first seven months. Well, I'm sorry, in less, for seven months, we made twenty-two thousand dollars in interest. And we've been paying flat payments, so we are a little bit ahead. Which allowed us to maintain our bond rating in the middle of a pandemic. And I know that's. Very difficult to balance with children and and whatnot, but but that did, that. It was a, that was a help. And I I think Dale mentioned it as well, because of my fiscal. Forecasting and and what the plan was in twenty nineteen. Was actually to keep the budget, really all the budget very tight and to get through the bonding and. An increase and we put a lot of money around COVID hit. And it's not that we. I got tighter with the money with COVID necessarily, but what I didn't see. Was the inflationary impact in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. And what we we think now twenty-three and twenty-four. So we are in. A a inflationary deficit. So we're, we're adding a lot of percent. We're adding money to a lot of different places. Thirty-two B is a great one, a great acknowledgement, the the. Collective bargaining. But to make up a little bit of that deficit, but but we're not. You say inflationary deficit, it doesn't mean anything. It it does. What we pay and what we buy with a dollar is worth much less. And because I, you know, I. Did what I did with the budget and not give like three and five percent increases to each budget. We're, you know. We need to make a good plan to to step up and and fill that hole. And that's the attempt. This year, ARPA money has been helpful, but it's. It's one-time money and I think people think it's like, no, it's five years. No, you you get a block of it once. And you have four or five years to spend it. So all of the departments are using that money to plug holes. That are related to COVID and a little bit more, but but that's not sustainable. And I know that. Like, we're going to get through this inflationary gap in a long, in in the worst way possible, which is one-time money. So we, if nothing else, we have a path forward in a forecasting method to know where the money has to go. To keep the services we are able to do out in the operating budget with outside money. We've got a couple of years to start plowing that money. And 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 I will just say, if we don't, our forecast. For the inflationary deficit by twenty twenty-five will be twenty-one percent. So it's basically cutting everything twenty-five percent, including salaries. So I am not going to do that. You know, and we feel pretty good that we have got a way to close that gap. So maybe that was too weedy. But it's huge, it's a huge impact on our budget. So if I could go back in time. Thank you again, Chair.
Thank you. Megan?
Yeah, so I just wanted to follow up on what Ben and Dr. Leclerc were talking about with class sizes. I know we're jumping all over the place, but. I just wanted to confirm when we were doing this in Finance Committee. With the proposed budget that we're putting forward today from the Finance Committee. We are talking about K through four with average class sizes under twenty.
K through five, I think we're talking about.
So I was just looking, again, I wanted to make sure. I think maybe if it's a hundred and eight students in fifth grade and five teachers. Maybe, again, I know we don't want to be like nailing down that exactly. I think it was like twenty-one, twenty-two in that class, but that's fifth grade and we talked about K through four. I just wanted to make sure that that's.
Yep, I'm with you.
And that families know that we're talking about. Even with the the budget that we're putting forward with the reduction of three elementary teachers, we are, we were very careful. In our subcommittee meetings to be focused on class sizes under twenty from K through fourth grade. So I just wanted to make sure that's clear to Paris.
Yep, correct.
Any other questions?
Just a quick, a quick, a quick follow up to all of these ongoing questions, but I'm I'm wondering about. I, as I understand it, it, there's a, there's a K, there's a section of K, K one and five will have five sections. Is that right? And then.
Well, I don't want to, I don't want to say for sure. I want to wait and see what the numbers are.
Okay, I anticipated, anticipated, like not necessarily.
Well, people take things, you know.
I know.
Someone's typing that right now, Ben.
Oh, I know. Alright, no, that's that's helpful. I'm I'm just trying to get a feel for like the numbers.
Yeah, so I think the purpose coming out of our subcommittee was making sure that there was funding was there for the classes that needed to be. And so that there is the plan for some of those lower grades to have upwards of six classes. And that will help keep those ratios low. But the exact class grade specific is. Left up to Dr. Leclerc to make those determinations as we move further into the summer and know more definitively what are. Each grade's lot, number of students are and how those different ratios work out. So that's sort of how we've left it.
Yeah, and I would say, and we said this at the Finance Subcommittee, but it's worth repeating this in in seriousness. Our October first numbers, which is the first real state reporting we do to the Department of Ed. Our October first numbers are always lower than our March first numbers. Our March first numbers, the numbers we've just gathered, are the real time numbers we used. In the presentation that I, you know, showed you tonight about class sizes. We anticipate that those numbers will go down over the next, the next few months. Because they historically always do. People, people move and, you know, things happen. So. We always start the school year with less students than we end the school year with. That's how we've historically been.
So if there's no other questions, I would like to make a motion.
We're not, we're not voting here.
Sorry.
That's okay. This is the public hearing and then we're going to close that. We'll go on to the regular session. And in the regular session, we'll vote on the budget.
Thanks for the.
Is this, are there any other questions before we close the public hearing and? Move on. Megan?
Do we continue talking about this at that point in the agenda?
Yeah, we're going to discuss this when we, when we're discussing to to vote on the budget.
Thank you.
Okay, this is for the public to hear. When we get into regular session, there'll be public speak. You know, there'll be a regular meeting and that's where we will vote on budget. Okay, so do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing to move on to our standard regular school committee meeting.
I'll second that. Great. Alright, Megan?
Megan Harvey, yes.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle, yes.
Lori?
Laura Garcia, yes.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, yes.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, yes.
And Cindy Kuzinski, yes. Okay, so we have closed that. Now. We are going to roll call in. I know it sounds a little crazy, but we're going to roll call in and start the whole regular session. So we're going to do this right now. Megan?
Megan Harvey, here.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle, here.
Lori?
Laura Garcia, here.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, here.
And Ben?
And Hershey, here.
And Cindy Kuzinski, here. Okay, so we are opening up our our regular session. I do want to make an announcement. We will be. Going into executive session. I'm going to read this to discuss the reputation, character. Physical and mental health of an individual and we will be journeying. From that meeting. So we will go right into, we will end our regular meeting and move into executive session after this. We will not be returning. Okay, alright, so welcome everybody. Thank you for your patience and for attending and listening to this. Let's start with correspondence. Megan?
That's me. Hang on, I I pulled this up in a summary. Alright, so it's been another busy a couple of weeks of correspondence. And I want to say to start off, and I think I can speak for my colleagues here as well. We really appreciate all of the emails coming in from members of our community. And we appreciate that you're taking the time to write to us and express what what you're thinking about. So this is the part where I try to summarize and highlight what we have received in the past two weeks. We have received a number of emails from community members who are concerned about. The budget for next year. In general, these emails are asking school community members to. Approve a level services budget to send on to East Hampton City Council and Mayor LaChapelle for final approval and funding. And this is described in a variety of different ways in the emails we receive from human members, but. Trying to just sort of summarize the main asks. Community members are concerned about class sizes staying as small as possible and as small as they are. This year and in prior years, specifically under twenty students per class. No reduction in the amount of special, special education services received in regards to specialized services. And things like paraprofessionals and special needs and substantially different classroom services. An equal or greater amount of SEL, social emotional learning and school psychology services. And a lot of messages voicing much support and gratitude. To our teachers and paraprofessionals in the services that they provide to our students. And we received these emails from. Kira Henninger, Anne Tally, Nick Brazé, and Abby Ingram, Ted Harvey, Claire Boyd, Elise Langer. Carrie Wessel, Juliette Mowers, Jamie Paquette, Dave Jolynwensk. I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing. Sarah Jillo, Jilio, Ingrid Florrie, Andrew Foster, Teresa Bergeron. Kristen Davis, Lindsay Frank, Evan Zeimer, Evan, Aaron Schwab, Chris Korzak, Alyssa Pratt. Emma Hughes, Megan Kelly, and Jason Miranda. We have received some other emails. We also received an email from Shelby. Hovenin clarifying her advocacy for the East Hampton Music Boosters Program and offering. To work together with administration on finding a solution, moving forward to issues that were identified with the band room. At Mountain View. And finally, we received an update from Leah Ewing, who wrote to us. After a productive and collaborative meeting with the superintendent and curriculum director. And she provided an update on the Wait Till Eighth program, but also a larger sort of. Like focus on a a program with, you know, an array of programs available for parents with district support. Just to increase, you know, understanding around technology use and technology wellness and just making sure that parents have. An opportunity to voice their concerns and get information for their own, their own families. So that is it for correspondence this week. Thank you for all your emails.
Thank you. Do we have gifts?
We do not have any gifts this week that I'm aware of.
Okay, now someone's been patiently waiting to give us our student update. Hit it.
Thank you. So first off, Student Council has changed the day of our Spring Spirit Week. From the week before April vacation to the week after April vacation. We've changed it so that way the World Language Club will be back from their trip and will be able to participate in all the activities. Because we don't want them to miss out. The planned spirit days so far are Tie-Dye Day, Red Carpet Day. Adam Sandler Day, Sunglasses Day, and Class Color Day. We have gotten input from students and those are the ones that they liked the most. Next, we are planning on having a pep rally the Friday of Spirit Week. Some activities that we've planned so far are a seniors versus staff volleyball game. A game of musical chairs, a performance by the band and the cheer team. And energizers to get students involved and excited about the activities that we are going to be having. Student Council will also be running the concession stand for the Mamma Mia play that is being put on by the Drama Club. The dates of the play will be Thursday, April seventh, Friday, the eighth, Saturday, the ninth, and Sunday, the tenth. Our Drama Club has worked extremely hard and the play will certainly be a treat, so we wish them the best of luck. And finally, Student Council is planning on having a group lock-in on either April ninth or, oh, excuse me, April twenty-nine. Or May thirteenth. We feel that this is a great opportunity for council bonding and planning for more end of year activities. We have had the lock-in approved by Mr. Evans and we do have teachers that are willing to chaperone with them. So. We are very excited about that. That is all that I have for right now and thank you for listening.
Well, thank you. Alright, thank you for being patient. Alright, so now we'd like to open up. All right. So now we'd like to open up public speak. And I would ask that you keep your comments to three minutes, please, and say who you are and where you live. And okay, I see Kira has raised a hand right now, so we'll do Kira first and I'll be scrolling through looking for everybody else. If I do not see, just I will get to you, I promise. Megan will help. All right, go ahead, Kira.
Thank you. My name is Kira Henninger. I live on Maple Street. I have two students in third grade at Maple. First, I just want to say thank you for that really informative, well-presented budget. I have been watching many of the sessions of the Finance Committee and I just really appreciate the clarity around that and how it considered the feedback from community members. I want to note, based on the discussion before, I do not agree with the superintendent in that it is an excessive ask for the budget. The last five years has amounted to 1.65% increase in the school budget. With the 7.9 ask this year combined with the 0% increase two years ago and the minus 2.5%, this is an ask of 2.6% average over the last three years. So I think it's time to fund our schools appropriately, especially amidst the impact of the pandemic. I wonder about the class sizes. I'm glad to hear that we're trying to keep them small. We're also trying to recruit more students and coming back to our district, I've seen lots of information about getting tours and coming to the new Mountain View School and I worry that that number is quickly going to increase for all grade levels and that we will have let go three teacher positions. I realize it's not current teachers because it's two retirees and one resignation, but it's still three positions, which means decrease in service to our students. I also really worry about the paras. 9.2 is a lot of people to lose. And it is a decrease in service to students because that is increasing the student to teacher or the, sorry, the student to para ratio when providing their special education services. They are getting special education services because they've been identified as needing more specialized instruction in smaller groups. So I'm really wondering and would love clarification around what those positions are no longer serving. I'm also worried about the decrease in the two lunch monitors. I realize we're combining students into the school, but again, we are going to decrease services to, to the ratios for students coverage during a really unstructured time. Where only, I looked at the numbers, so there were 662 students K to five and we are now down to 650. So that's 12 students going down and we are losing two adults monitoring them over the lunch periods. As a school psychologist, I know how tricky unstructured time is for students, especially students with higher needs. And I think that they should be adequately staffed to minimize the disruption to their time during lunch. Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm going to call on Megan in a second. I noticed a lot of signs with no name where it says, "Level Service Budget Now." I can't call on just that title. So if you could make sure your name shows if you want to speak so that I can actually call on the name, okay? So just if you can switch that before I get to everybody. All right, Megan?
Hi, thank you. My name is Megan Davis. I live on Holyoke Street. I'm a parent of two kiddos in East Hampton Public Schools. My son is at the middle school and my daughter is at Maple. I just want to start by thanking you for the thoughtful work that clearly went into this budget. I'm, I was really pleased to see a lot of the additions that I, I wasn't aware of some of them and just pleased to see additions in the budget that are going to be supportive to the staff and to the students. And I also want to remain mindful of the fact that it is not a normal year that we are in and next year won't be normal. Normal for our students, nor will the next year. We are in a transition period coming back from COVID and it's going to be, we'll see the effects of that for years to come. And so I just want to affirm what I have heard from so many parents, so many teachers and so many paraeducators that we need to keep our class sizes small. And if they're smaller than than they might normally be because we're, we have smaller numbers one year, that's actually great for our kids. It's great for our kids to have smaller class sizes and more adults supporting them. I also want to express my concern about the loss of paraeducators. Even if we're trying to like creatively share paraeducators between classes or programs, the continuity and structure that having a paraeducator with you as a small child with your class and, and the consistency of that is really important for kids, especially at the elementary school level. And so keeping those paraeducators in the classrooms is important. And I, I also want to just speak to the fact that our, our teachers and paraeducators have absorbed so much for us over the past couple of years and they work so hard. So whatever we need to do as a community with our budget in order to give them what they need to serve our youngest community members, I am fully behind that. So I, I agree with what Kira said. I don't think the budget is excessive. I think we need as much as we can possibly allocate to support our teachers, to support our paraeducators and to give the, the kids what they need to make it through this transition time. So that's what I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Elise?
Hello, thank you. So I, I also want to thank everyone who put so much work into creating this proposed budget into the thoughtfulness of, you know, all of the, the new positions that have been created. As a former science teacher, I am delighted to see a STEM position being added to the district. I, oh, and I didn't say, I live on Garfield Ave and I have two students in the district. I have one in at Center and one at Mountain View right now. I guess there are a couple of different things I wanted to say. First of all, I understand that a budget is about numbers and, and so that's what we've been talking about. I guess I just do get concerned. I have been concerned that the human element is lost in some of this conversation that you know, there are real children and real teachers that will be affected by whatever decision is made about the budget. You know, I left teaching before the pandemic because it felt too overwhelming to me and I am, I am overwhelmed with gratitude for the work that our city's teachers have put into creating safe, supportive, nurturing environments for our students throughout the pandemic. I, you know, I just, I know that there is a max size of a classroom in the new building, but I just would love to ask teachers how they feel about 22, 23, 24 students in a class compared to what they've been doing now, considering the emotional, social and emotional impacts that the pandemic has had on students. How are teachers doing? How are students doing? And how does this proposed budget take teacher morale and retention into consideration? This country is experiencing a teacher shortage and I, I worry that the way this conversation has happened and the, the idea of class size is not being that much bigger. I, I just, I want, I want teachers to feel like they are being cared for, like they are being supported because they are the ones that care for and support the children in the district. And there are already more, there's, there's more social, emotional, I don't know what the word I'm looking for is, unrest in classrooms that I, I have been reported to me for my own children this year with the, you know, smaller class sizes and so how will teachers and students be supported by this budget? And then secondly, I also just want to mention, you know, I have been trying to find articles about correlations between school construction, new buildings and increases in enrollment. And what I have read, it has seemed that enrollment sharply increases when new buildings are created in districts. And I know we also have stopped accepting school choice students. And so if we start doing that again and if more families decide to bring their children back to the district and we're three elementary teachers short, I, I just, I would like to be more forward-thinking than that. Than, you know, letting these positions disappear and then having to add that back in. And meanwhile, teacher morale and trust has been affected. So thank you very much. I really do appreciate all the work that's going into this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Hi, I live on Maple, not on Maple, on Clark Street in East Hampton. And I have a first grader at Maple. And I moved here from Colorado during the pandemic and I picked East Hampton School District because I knew that the new school was being built and it was very exciting. But what I researched was, is the class size. If you are searching for real estate in any area and you're concerned and you have school-aged children, you look at Niche is a great website. And their thing about school ratings is all about class size, how much they spend per student. And so as a concerned parent, just even before the pandemic, these are the, the choices I made to pick East Hampton specifically and, you know, the school rating. But really like the class size is what's really was the, the key selling point for me. And with the pandemic, I think every, all the parents are really chiming in that, you know, that we've seen the social, emotional impact, but then just the academic deficit that a lot of our kiddos have experienced during the pandemic. You know, with my kiddo doing kindergarten via Zoom was was really challenging, trying to learn how to read remotely. You know, so I think our, we're going to be studying this for decades to come about the ramifications of the pandemic. And so saying that in the past, school size didn't matter after like fourth grade. Well, our fifth graders are really like fourth graders and our, you know, that like there is a deficit that's going to need to be accommodated. And, and I really really value our paras in the classroom and know what a huge difference they make because I am one of them. And I work at Maple School as a para as well, which I love being there and but yeah, I just, I really, I don't know what the answer is, but I just wanted to, to speak about my experience as a, as a parent at Maple. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Alice?
Hi, everybody. My name's Alice Barber and I live on Batney Street in East Hampton. And I'm here as a parent of a sixth grade student named Jess who has been so incredibly well-supported this year and last that it truly brings me to tears. And this, so I'm going to read a letter that I wrote here. So this has been such a difficult time for teachers, parents, students, and my child is where she is now due in part to the efforts of her teachers and other school staff. And as a parent, I'm asking you to level fund next year's budget. And though I'm here as a parent, I'm also here as a psychotherapist for children, specifically young children who have experienced trauma. I have been at this for 25 years and can tell you with no hesitation that children's mental health has never, ever been in such crisis in my professional lifetime. The system is absolutely flooded with referrals, crisis calls, wait lists and desperate, desperate parents. The past two years have been detrimental in so many ways to so many of our children and their mental health is now in a very precarious place. And I know that there is a desire to get back to normal. However, the current state of our children is anything but that. And I do believe we are at least several years from normal, quote unquote. To be clear, I'm not blaming this mental health crisis on any one aspect of the pandemic. We did what we had to do and I'm thankful that the school committee made the decisions they did under considerable stress. Now later in this pandemic, we are seeing the impact in real time to the emotional functioning of our children. I consult to schools across the country about children's behavioral health and the impact of the pandemic is consistent, no matter where or to whom I'm consulting. Schools are on fire and teachers are rightly so exhausted. Now with our budget on the line, it is my conviction that we heal in community with one another and it is imperative that we at minimum maintain this community for our children and not take from it, not this year, maybe some other year, but not this one. Our children have lost friends, skills, family members and a general sense of calm and security. When children are in states of escalated emotional health, they cannot learn. They need the attention that a smaller teacher to student ratio affords. In my opinion, there is no question about this. If we choose not to level fund at this time, we will spend the money elsewhere in caring for the most impacted children among us. Teachers have also been through this trauma and have absolutely pivoted when they have been asked to do so each and every single time. It is not only our children currently on the line, but our teachers as well. To pull staff from their ranks will only continue to chip away at their morale and the attention they can give our children. To pull staff away from their ranks sends the wrong message about how much we value them and the work that we do. Committee and Mayor LaChappelle, please support level funding of our students. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. There are three hands raised. We're going to have those three hands and then we're going to have to close public speak. So next is Jessica, please.
Hi, my name is Jessica. I live on Westview Terrace. I have two kids in East Hampton Public Schools. A daughter who's a senior at the high school and a daughter who's in fourth grade at Pepin School. I wanted to say that when we moved to East Hampton, when my now senior was in second grade, we very quickly learned about the reputation that this year's senior class has, which was, oh, that class. Because for the first time in many, many years, they had cut the paraprofessionals in kindergarten the year that this year's senior class were kindergartners and they saw the fallout from that. 13 years later, we're still seeing the fallout from this year's senior class. And I'm sure that they've improved a lot. I know my daughter has. But it, it's a real issue and I just feel like if we cut the paras at any age level, especially following COVID, that we're setting our kids up for behavioral issues, an increase in behavioral issues. The kids who are suffering from trauma, just the instability in a lot of these homes. And I think that's something we need to keep in mind. I will also say that I work in a local school district. Our elementary school classroom sizes are an average of 14 or 15 kids to one teacher and every single grade K through six has a paraprofessional in every single classroom. I know that they're extremely blessed. I don't think that they understand all the time how blessed they are, but it also shows with the kids. And even so, we've really struggled keeping up with the social, emotional health of our students. I would also just like to say that as somebody who has worked in the East Hampton School District previously and received paraprofessional pay, when you look at the town budget and you look at the staff budget, you look at the school budget, it's kind of a slap in the face that Mayor LaChappelle's pay increase for this year alone is the equivalent of an entire year's salary for one paraprofessional. So that kind of puts in perspective to me what the priorities are. And I understand there's unions and I understand people get pay increases. But when you're cutting so many people and one person is getting the equivalent so many people and one person is getting the equivalent of a pay raise, a raise for the year, for a cost of living raise that one person would make an entire year. It's just something for the town to be aware of. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Jen?
Hey there, everyone. I came tonight to add my voice to the chorus of people thanking everybody for the work that they've done on this. And I know how hard it has been for us all, living in a pandemic and being public servants in a pandemic. So I appreciate all your work and your thoughtfulness. I also have come to add my voice to the chorus of people urging you to propose a level service budget. And I'm speaking as both a parent of one of these pandemic kids, a kid who's only known in school in these pandemic years. And as a teacher myself, I live on East Street in East Hampton, but I teach in Northampton at the Northampton Public Schools. And with both of those hats, I can tell you parentally and professionally, with certainly, with certainty, that smaller class sizes will continue to be crucial to the success of our students. Over the course of the, course of the past two years, you know, we've all experienced the stress that this pandemic has created and know the effects it's had on children's mental health and academic readiness and skills. We have more students with more significant needs. And these are not the years to cut teachers, to cut paras, or to bring class sizes up. Teachers and teaching staff has experienced some of their hardest years in teaching, myself included. And stressed teachers, teaching stressed students deserved at the very least to maintain the current level of support in class size. The larger class sizes proposed, even if it's a little, even if it's a difference between 16 to 18 versus 19 to 23, it, it's it's an already strange system. And adding more to that will create more strain. And I urge you to demand at least a level services budget. As anything less is just going to result in kids missing out on necessary sports, falling further behind socially and academically, and contribute to educator burnout and further road staff morale. Next year, we get to enter this like beautiful new building. And I hope that we can do that, knowing that educators and their students have the supports they need to make the year one of renewal and growth and healing from these incredibly trying pandemic years. And I think we can show our educators that we value them for all that they are and all that they've had to do for us these last two years. And set our students up for the mental, social, and academic health and success they deserve after weathering these last few years. Because I really believe that what we do this year is going to have lasting impact and telling repercussions. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Shelley?
Hi, I'm just speaking tonight on behalf and in favor of the teachers out there that have been working really hard. And I'd really hate to see a lot of these paraprofessionals. I know my son has paraprofessionals that work with him on a regular basis. My son's also had a lot of social emotional issues throughout the year. And he's also on IEP. So I understand that you're trying to cut some to fill some other spots. But at the same time, I'd hate to see the classrooms grow without that extra support by the paras for the teachers. The teachers won't have that extra time to commit to parent updates and emails and the communications that I've gotten from my son's teacher throughout the years. She's been phenomenal. She reaches out, she lets me know like today that he had a fabulous day. And those are really important for us parents to be able to get that little bit of closure and follow up every day, knowing that they had a bad day and to try and balance at home with school and how to regulate those two paths together. I know he would also benefit from the IEP side, but I also know the workload and how hard it can be for teachers. And I know that you guys are already planning on increasing class sizes. And I think that maybe some of the budget cuts could get looked at and maybe narrowed down a little bit more because I think getting rid of the paras and losing three teachers could be detrimental to some of these kids because they've already been losing a lot with the pandemic. And it's really just going to hurt them in the end. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are going to close public speak. And we are going to move on to the presentation. So that is Dr. Luclear.
Thank you. The only thing I have this evening is the approval of the school calendar for next year. So I think that should be in your packet. And we've included with it, it should, you're looking for two pages. The first page is the calendar and the second page is the list of 22, 23 holiday and observances calendar, which is what our equity team had requested and they had input in helping us develop that. And so we'd like both documents to be put forward together. That's how they'll be posted so that the observances of holidays can be identified, even though they may not be part of the actual calendar for time off from school. But we want to acknowledge the, all the different holidays that are out there during the calendar year. So school is proposed to, I won't go through the whole thing. School's proposed to begin next year for the teachers on August 30th. We'll have a new teacher day on the 29th, which is a Monday. And then welcome back teachers on the 30th and the 31st. And then welcome back students on September 1st and 2nd. And then everyone will have a long weekend. We'll have, believe it or not, we have September 6th off, which is Tuesday because it's a voting day in the state. And then students come back on the 7th. And then school is projected to end on the 16th. But there may of course be snow days, so we don't know about that. But other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about the calendar. It's been reviewed by the union, by the leadership team, so it has their stamp of approval.
Any questions about the calendar?
I just want to make a comment. I think that it's great that we've sort of taken the time to expand the review and understanding of holidays and including that for background for anybody doing planning in our school year to be able to have those days, know when they may be affecting different religions and holidays, whether or not the school building is actually open. So it's a big step forward. I know the Equity Committee worked on that and just think that's a really, and parents' involvement, students' involvement. So I just think it's really great that we're taking that step forward.
Lori?
I wanted to say something similar to what Maren just said, and I want to especially thank Julianne Levin, who worked very hard with the Equity Committee. I sat in on, on the last meeting for that about the calendar and we discussed it in depth and what should be on the calendar and what shouldn't. But I do want to let the community know that if there's ever a celebration or a holiday that you feel that is not recognized on that calendar, you just have to get in touch with us because we want to be inclusive to everyone. And I also want to highlight that our administration should pay special attention to it because at times there are events planned that you think everyone could go to and they can't. So that's one of the reasons that we did that. So once again, thank you to Julianne, who really spent a lot of time.
Comments or discussion? Does someone want to make a motion to approve the calendar?
I would like to make a motion to approve the calendar with the addendum to recognize the cultural and religious celebrations in our community.
I'll second that.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, Megan?
Megan Harvey, yes.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle, yes.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, yes.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, yes.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, yes.
And Cindy Kuzinski, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have.
All right. So now we have our big important discussion. This is our vote on the proposed 2023 school budget. So do we have any discussion about our thoughts? Lori?
As someone who is not on the Finance Subcommittee, I want to thank everyone who is involved and especially Maren for his leadership. And I know there are always hard decisions. But I can say that I feel a lot better even after reading all of the concerns of parents. And once again, when you write to us, we do not have time to answer all of you. But we do read and we pay attention to what you say and what your concerns are. But it's a budget that we have to work with and I feel that you did an amazing job with that. And I do feel better hearing the explanation that we got from Sarah Mocheck involving our Special Ed Department. So I feel better about it. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, one of the comments that I thought I would like to add into this conversation, I think anytime when we're looking at change, it's, there's a feeling of uncertainty about what it's going to be like on the other end and how our special education program is going to be in the new building. And, you know, I think one of the examples, I mean, we've talked about the ability to have better you know, engagement of students, whether it's because of the structure of the building is now better aligned with that or with having a specialized pedagogy teacher, not just one per building and covering all five grades, but now they're going to be able to cover a grade or two with shared responsibilities. That's a huge change. And I think it's going to make a really big impact on our students. But I think also when you just are looking at numbers, and I agree, that, that 9.2 decrease in paraprofessionals is hard to swallow. It's like, why, right? But I think one of the other things that was mentioned is, you know, one of the things that paraprofessionals did was they helped cover our library, right? They helped cover students going in and using our library services. Well, again, if we just look at that 9.2, it's hard to swallow. But if you look at the positions that we're adding, we're adding now a full-time, fully educated certified librarian that's going to be working at each of the elementary and middle school levels. Like, that's a huge change in how we're being able to use that educational tool of a library. So it's not, I think we need to be careful about overly fixating on the 9.2 reduction and recognize that there's a lot of shifting and changing that there's a lot of positives that are coming out of this. And the, the level of professionalism that our team is going to be able to do is going to be really important. And that's going to be able to provide better services to students and better use of the tools that those teachers and librarians and all the different roles that we have across our school is going to be able to engage and offer to our students. So I think that that's just an important one to keep in mind. Everyone has an important role to educate our kids. And bringing in some specialists who really have the specific skill like a librarian makes a big difference. And I just want to emphasize that.
Thank you, Ben.
Absolutely. Just agreeing with you, Maren, 100%. I think like the positives of the new school are beyond measure and very exciting. And I can't wait to see what life is like a year from now after we've had a year in the building. But I'm still, I'm still a little worried personally, like the, like all this budget, I've really been like getting schooled in budget speak over the last few weeks and it's been incredible. It's been an amazing experience. But I'm worried that like the, the, the numbers are so precise and so seemingly fixed that like the human element here gets pushed aside. And the fact that like our, our students and our teachers, at least by my, you know, vantage point at Maple, and from what I hear at Centrepathen, are stressed out. And the, the teachers are like the, the pressures on the teachers are beyond fair. I mean, it's, it's ridiculous. And certainly it's not just East Hampton. I mean, this is an issue everywhere. And the students are also wrestling with like a tremendous amount of pressure on them all the time. And I don't feel 100% confident or comfortable that we are appropriately really addressing some of these problems. Like, we, we talk a good game. We, we talk about equity, we talk about SEO. We're, we're bringing in a person next year to kind of take on SEO. We've got really great special need programming in the works. But, but I'm still feeling like sometimes I feel like social emotional learning, SEO, is like a buzzword that we throw around without actually really kind of putting it into power, thinking about what it means to put it really into practice. So I'm just, I'm, 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 I'm hearing these amazing, I'm reading these amazing emails from parents who are just illuminating incredible truths. I felt like the public speak just now was like a gallery of masterpiece artwork, very moving and, and, and wonderful to hear. And I know that there, like, one of the things I've learned as I've been studying the budget with, with the Finance Committee and everyone else is that there is a dollar and cent amount attached to everything. And if there's no money, it's very difficult to make movement, to make change, to, to grow and to progress and to evolve, et cetera, et cetera. And, and, and so I'm just worried about that. And I'm worried about the fact that like I've talked to teachers in this district who are you know, like I said, like doing incredible work and they're worried, they're scared either for themselves or for their colleagues, absolutely rightly. And when I, when I, when I look at the bigger picture nationally and I see how this is a profession that is bleeding professors, teachers, like we are not, this is not, we're not doing a good job in this country, keeping teachers in the profession. There's very little impetus for people to, to stay in this profession who are not being paid well and certainly not getting the respect that they deserve, at least in my opinion. And I really wish that East Hampton could kind of like step up around this issue a little bit and find a way to attend to, to this real thing that somebody said that these teachers, somebody said in the public speak, these teachers are working with our children and they're, they deserve, you know, that kind of respect. So this too, it's just this thing where like, we, we need to make progress here. We need to pass a budget. But as we go into this new building, it, it feels, it feels like a bad look for East Hampton to go into this new era, cutting, cutting, you know, our beloved professionals who work here and who are literally hanging out with our children every day. So anyway, you know, I'm excited. I'm super pumped about the future of this district. I feel like we are on the right track. We are moving. And we, we have a lot of great ideas in, in motion. But there are still a lot of things that need work and everything costs money. So anyway, maybe these are more comments than anything, but I really hope that we don't just talk and, 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 and sort of not actually attended a real work involved. Thanks for listening.
Megan?
Thanks, Ben. I appreciate that. And I also have been reading the emails coming in with a lot of attention. And I think folks know, but just to make sure it's clear, I'm on, I'm on the, am on the Finance Subcommittee and so have been involved in these discussions all along. But also I think folks know that this is my first year doing this in this position. So I wish that I had zoomed in closer on this para professional issue a little bit more before we voted it out of Subcommittee. I do hope that there's room for us to talk about this a little bit more tonight in this discussion about, you know, what's possible in this vote, what's, if there's amendment possibilities of adding paraprofessionals back into the budget at this point. I'm really curious to hear what folks think about that sort of approach to moving forward and what impact that would have on the budget in terms of dollars, but also in terms of like services for kids. I was glad, I'm glad to hear all of the sort of really great benefits we're going to have in the new school. But I do, I wish I could get some clarity on like, are we going to have in the new school, a para in each classroom? And at what grades? At K through two, K through four? You know, like what, what does that actually look like in terms of like services in the building? Because I, I agree, like I'm seeing with my kids, and I know one person is not data, it's just an anecdote, but like my, they need extra support, right? They're just like, I think extra hands in the classroom. They're just like, I think extra hands in the classroom. I'd rather err on the side of having too many people in the classroom helping out. And then, you know, look for reductions in future years if we really need to. But I, I really would feel more comfortable airing on the side of just like more support for teachers and kids.
Dr. Leclerc, do you have that information as to how many paras are in classrooms?
We have. For classroom paras, we have para educators in the preschool classrooms and in all the kindergarten classrooms. That's a regular, that's a regular para educator. We don't have regular para educators assigned to other classroom grades. We have support paras in the buildings that go into classrooms, but they're not assigned to us. Not every first grade classroom or every second grade classroom has a para educator.
So right now, just to clarify, those nine point two are, I don't know if I'm using this term properly. They're like floating paras that can sort of support. The classrooms as needed.
I don't know if Sarah is still on the call. I don't want to get into. Too specific an issue, because you know, we're. I don't want people to get the wrong idea. So they're K eight. And not K eight, they were, they're elementary, so they could be grade one through eight. Elementary and middle. Some of them are three, we're taking, for example, three para educators. Would equal the salary of one special education teacher. So when Sarah noted a new special education program, like at pre K two. We would take three para educators and hire one. Professional teacher, special education teacher, who's, you know, highly trained in that field. And they would have. They would be the teacher of that room. So we would pull three paras that were maybe pushing in to service students. Because remember, under the old model, we didn't have any additional spaces in our small elementary schools. So we couldn't do like specialized instruction as well. So paras would push in, but now we'll have a space for the students to come and work with a professional educator. Instead of working in the classroom with the paras. And about three paras equal the salary of one educator.
So when we get. The addition of a special education teacher. They'll be able to have more specialized services, but they won't be able to see as many or work directly with as many students as the three paras.
I don't think that that's necessarily true, because I think as someone said, I don't know if it was Sarah or Marin. Our special education teachers can be deployed in different ways with this new building. They can see students in a separate classroom or in their office. Room area, or they can push in and use, we have breakout spaces between each classroom. So we can change the service delivery model. They can also, an educator, a specialized educator can consult with a classroom teacher and offer support, co-teaching. There are a lot of things that are different from what a para educator can do, but they could potentially be better.
I came back on if you want me to.
Okay, did I answer that? Was I clear, Sarah? Or do you want to add anything?
No, the only thing that.
I don't know if you heard the question.
I did.
Okay.
The only thing that I'd like to add is that no child will lose services with this shift. And so it's not as though, oh, children and dogs are going to start making noise. It, so we went through carefully all of the, you know, the services. So by, by making this reduction, it's not as though a student will be losing services. So all the students that still need para educator support via an IEP or a specialized program. Will still be afforded that service. I think it really. And I've worked here a long time. I've worked with these people. They are really valuable. And I think that we've had a history of. Relying too heavily on para educators in some ways. And I think that is partly because of the structure of our schools, like the physical spaces of our schools. And I really truly believe that, that moving towards shifting this, that money. And you know, Ben, I agree, it's hard to, you know, reconcile money and people. But moving that money to more specialized staff who have very specific training and education. Just makes more sense. You know, it's really shifting how we're thinking about delivering services to our neediest stu-, our students with the most need. So I, to me. It, it really is a benefit to, to our, to our special education students. I heard a lot of what people were saying at public speak. And I, and I'm not sure that the, the, the way that people think that paras are used in our district is actually the way that, that we deploy those, those. Resources.
Lori?
I would just like to acknowledge what was said, that three paras make up one teacher in salary. But that's the unfortunate issue that happens throughout this country. Paras aren't paid enough. And it's not only East Hampton, so I want to say that. And also I feel that some of the concerns that parents brought to our attention. Occur at recess, occur when students are getting ready to make the transitions, to, you know, get their boots on, maybe bathroom visits. And I just wonder in our new school, if it's going to be easier for people to watch students during these transition times. So maybe parents will be more comfortable with that, especially with the beautiful new play facilities we have for recess areas. I'm sure it's going to be easier to watch the kids. Is that true, Dr. Leclerc?
It will be so much easier. And I think that. You know, their grade levels are on wings, so it's, it's much easier to keep children at the same age level together. There are multiple playground areas, so students won't need to intermingle with. Young students won't intermingle with older students. They'll play on appropriate playground equipment. You know, I think we had to someone's question earlier about lunch monitors. You know, in the district currently in K eight, we have about 12 lunch monitors. Because we have four cafeterias, no, three cafeterias, excuse me. And but going into the new building, we'll have two cafeterias. So even if we have four or five lunch monitors in each cafeteria at the same time. Plus administrators who also do lunch duty. You know, some of them will go outside, some of them will be inside. We'll be servicing kids, you know, a grade level at a time, you know, maybe 100 students at a time in a lunch wave. So that is enough adult coverage, particularly keep in mind, we have multiple administrators in the building. As well. It's not just, you know, Maple, you have one building principal. Now there will be, you know, a K two principal, a three, five principal, a six, eight principal. They'll be ahead of school, you know, there are a lot of adults in the building that will be able to support students and monitor. You know, where students are going and, and that kind of passing through the halls and everything in recesses. So I think it'll be a huge difference.
Megan, you have your hand raised again?
Yeah, back up, just, just still thinking about that, some things and trying to work through. I appreciate all these responses. It's really helpful in how we think about this. So as I'm thinking about like, the way we're framing the discussion. In terms of like, okay, we only have X number of dollars. Is it better to have, is it better? Again, taking the human element out of things, to have three paras for one special education teacher. And I guess what I'm hearing parents asking us to do is to say to you all, like. Can we have the three and a half special education teachers? And add, and do we need to add back in para professionals to support our students? But so thinking of it from that direction, like if we were to say add in. Add back three para professionals or five para professionals, like what would they be doing? What, what would be the service that they'd be assigned to? Like, would it be that we could then have a para in each first grade classroom? And maybe if that's, and I know that you, it's like really hard to, and you're trying to say it's like, you can't answer that specifically, Megan. And I get that, but I also am thinking like, these are kids who have never had normal school. And have, we, we've had that really great piece of data coming in from our reading specialist. Jody, weeks ago, and all of these children who have such. Greater need than they had before. And so do we want, even if in the future we're able to go back down on the number of paras? Do we need them for next year? To say we, we want to have more than we usually have. We want to have one in every first grade classroom. And, and what does it look like to add them back in? Not either or, but like.
Can I just clarify? You never had first grade pa-, you didn't have first grade.
I know, right?
So it's like, bring, bring them back. You didn't, you didn't have them to begin with, so.
Right, I don't mean.
It wouldn't be adding them back, yeah. It would be creating a new position. That's what you would be doing. You would be creating a new position for a para educator.
Is this an opportunity for us to do that with the greater need that we have? I mean, given this, I, this sort of discussion about like what a para's salary is versus the special education. You know, what would more paras be doing? Would that be an opportunity?
Well, that's just it. What is the problem you're trying to solve for?
Sorry, said again.
What is the problem you're trying to solve for?
Great question. Um, I guess I'm hearing about the increase in need. Heading or coming out of the pandemic. That's unusual for what kids of this age typically would need. So it's, it's almost like I'm hearing, we don't just need level services, we might need more for a little while.
If I could just offer a little bit of perspective, I mean. As Sarah Mochek has mentioned, she's been doing this for seven years, right? She has quite a bit of experience in, in both at the director role and previously at other levels in this district. And I, I think that we can, I think there's a, there's a certain degree to which we have to be careful on school committee. Of sort of. I want to say this respectfully, because I understand all, I really appreciate all the questions you're asking and the, and the desire to dig in to make sure that we're setting this budget up. And the, the implications of that budget for our administrators, for the teachers, for our students, everybody across the levels. But I think there's a certain degree to which we have to be careful about. We, we, we decide on line items, not on the specific role. So like, and this is what Dr. Leclerc said over and over again, we're not through this budget process deciding. We are, we're hiring exactly six second grade teachers, right? We are, we are approving a line item that has a certain level of funding in teaching positions. In para positions. And how then that role, how that budget then gets rolled out is up to the people that we've. You know, the person that we as a committee hired in Dr. Leclerc and her leadership team through her administrators, her director of special education. They're the ones who make those decisions and try to roll out the best program they can with the funding that we've been able to offer them. So I think that we have to be careful about sort of going in too deep into the weeds. On this kind of an example, I just, I, otherwise I think we're going to keep spinning. And, and I don't know if we're going to get to a place that's going to be any different than where we are right now, which is. This is what the director of special education is, is asking for. And, and is saying that in her best knowledge, this is where she thinks we should go. And I think that to a degree, we need to support her in her expertise and what she's asked of the school committee for funding.
I just want to be really clear that I am in no way saying that I do not support Sarah or, or trust in what she's saying. I'm, I'm simply asking questions about if more money can come from another location, if it's not an either or. I, I fully support and respect what Sarah is doing, and I highly value her opinion, which is why I'm, I'm asking her directly.
I don't know, I don't know if, oh, you want Sarah to take a stab at that?
Did you, you wanted me to answer the question about?
The only reason I'm asking, if you want Sarah, Sarah oversees the special education department. I, you're not asking, I, I, if I'm understanding you correctly, you're not asking for special education paras. You're asking for a classroom para. That's different from a special education para. So that's not Sarah's wheelhouse. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to discern what you're asking.
I guess I am too. That's an excellent point. I'm sort of just wading through all of it. I'm taking in, you know, all of the information that we were sent and then, you know, the extra reading that I have done in the, you know, the past. Week or so as this issue got brought up and just looking for like, what, you know, like bottom line, what do our kids need? What does, what do you need and Sarah need? To, to give the kids what they need next year. I'm, I'm absolutely not trying to like. Fight against you. I want you to have everything.
Yeah, I know, I know.
For the money that you need.
I, I think that I will, I agree with Marin. I think that, you know, based on the work that the leadership team has done. This is what we feel reflects our needs. Now, what I would say is that in our thinking. We've been. Living through these past few years, I think we have a pretty good understanding of. The challenges that are presenting themselves in our schools. And I think that our. Rationale was to hire. Highly trained individuals to support some of the challenges that we're seeing in classes. Among students. So we're looking at special education teachers that have a degree in special education. We're looking at a social emotional coordinator that has the skills and the training and the expertise. To support teachers in the classroom. So our, our foundation of thinking was that. We did not feel that the, based on the needs that we see every day. We did not feel that adding para educators was the solution. We were looking for more highly trained individuals and also knowing that we were going into the new building. Where services and programs are going to be consolidated. Keep in mind, you know, at Maple, you have one counselor. When we go into the new building, that gets tripled. You know, so we have more supports at multiple levels when we go into the new building. We have more reading specialists that will be in one central location to be deployed amongst all of the schools. So I, I think that that's the foundation of what we were. Planning and why we chose to go in the direction that we chose.
So, I just wanted to weigh in a little bit here. Some people may not know my background, but I'm a special education teacher. And so the needs of students and watching students' emotional, social, emotional needs. Are near and dear to my heart. I see this every day. I am and was concerned about class size, particularly in, did a lot of pushing. On Dr. Leclerc to commit to small class sizes for our lower grades. Because that's the building block of. Because that's the building block of reading and our basic skills. So that we can make stronger fourth graders and fifth graders and sixth and on and on and on. So we're really looking to keep those numbers as low as we can without saying that this particular grade will get, um, this extra teacher. Because we're going to put it where the numbers pan out to say that we can keep those, the focus on the early grades and the numbers as low as we can. Um, but I love having para educators. I will tell you, I love, I love them, okay? But the difference between having a para educator and having a special ed teacher is profound. A special ed teacher is going to be testing and prepping and designing and adjusting and making accommodations every day, all day on, for every student. So when you can add into a program, an extra special education teacher, you're strengthening not only the special ed students, but you're strengthening the class. Because special education teachers go into the classroom, consult with the teachers, talk about what's going on, try to prevent problems before they happen. So for me, as much as I love para educator support, the idea of having that extra special education teacher makes me feel very confident. Because I know what is in the toolbox of every special education teacher. And it's important stuff. Whereas a para educator, as blessed as they are, does not have that, that in their disposal. They can implement the certain things they are, you know, they are really, they connect with students. I could go on and on about how wonderful para educators are, but it's still not the same. If we're asking to address the social emotional needs of kids, then we want to add to that program and Dr. Leclerc has. If we want to add to the strength of learning, especially focusing on special education kids, then in my opinion, it is crucial to have that special education teacher. I would take as many as we could have. Um, because the amount of prep and testing and information that they have is just phenomenal. So I feel pretty confident about seeing a transition like that. It's, I would be in a panic if it was drop, you know, and not add a para, uh, uh, educator. Because the, that would be, that would be true, true phenomenal loss. Ben?
Guess I'm, I'm just, it's almost like this is like a zero sum thing, like where it's like one or the other. Like, and then I realize again, there's money associated with all of this. But when I'm thinking about like teachers in day to day life, and this might not even be a special ed question, uh, I'm just wondering about like, you know, the support needed for kids, K first grade, second grade, who are truly struggling. And I've heard firsthand stories, like, just like Megan said, like, uh, one anecdote, story anecdote is not data, but like, they're everywhere, the stories are everywhere, uh, and a, uh, an extra person in the classroom is a big deal. I mean, it's a huge deal. And if we're talking K one and two, I know, and I, I realize like the salaries for these people are not even that high. But, um, I really think that like, this is a, this is one of those places where like, we are in a critical zone right now. It's temporary, it's not going to last forever, hopefully. But this is the, this is like an emergency measures almost in my mind, like we need extra. And I know I'm being greedy or something, but like, I've just seen it so much. I want, I want this, I want the kids. When a teacher has two kids who are losing it in class and she, and she or he or has to go to those two kids, what happens to the rest of the kids? If there's one other person there that at least can help diffuse? I've heard specific stories about this happening where like, the teacher is attending to a, a couple of kids who are losing it and the paras attending to another kid who's losing it. And it's still not working. So this is just, this is like a, a real dilemma that I, I would love to see addressed in some way, shape or form.
My answer to that kind of would be, that's where the extra adjustment counselor, um, plays a part. So if you have a class where kids are really struggling, that's the person you call to help smooth things over and settle things down. Um, and again, we're adding that extra position. I am not saying this is a perfect budget. I really am not.
For sure.
I would love a lot more money. I was astounded by our transportation costs, which we knew we were going to need more buses. But, you know, inflation, transportation, all the different things that have gone into, stressing our budget. Um, many of them, we kind of knew would happen, but not quite to the extent that they would happen.
Look, look, call me, call me a rookie coming up against new realities. But like, this is like kids and like buses in a way, right? Like kids versus buses, or it's like special ed versus kids in classes. And it's, you know what I mean? It's like teachers' salaries versus para salaries. It's like.
Correct.
I, I guess I'm just like, it's, I, I, we need, we need, these people need some support. And I, there are roles we all have to place. The, the, the school committee can only do what it can do. You know, like we let Dr. Leclerc run things, we let the principals run things in the buildings, we take care of it that way. But this is like legitimately a problem. So I'm just struggling with that, I guess.
But we need, we need everything. We need more buses. And if, if we don't have more buses, then it does affect children. Because we cannot say to families, look, you know, your child's not going to get a ride on a bus. Because we're not going to get that extra bus. So the bus is not a bus or children. The bus is transporting our children. And we did know that we were going to need more. Um, it's just that things have gone up so much. Um, you know, the whole idea of, you know, equity, you know, we have to, we have to provide as much equity as we can. You know, I had some people ask, well, change the bus policy. And that would be horrific if we start telling children and families that their children are going to get a ride. So there's a lot to weigh. It's not, it's not, it's not an easy budget. And, um, it's not a perfect budget. But you are right, we can't micromanage where Dr. Leclerc and her team put, uh, their staff. But we also have to, I hope, trust that as changes happen in a school, Dr. Leclerc, tell me if I'm totally wrong. I, I work in one school. In a school, if there is a particular need that arises that nobody knew about, you do some adjustments in your staffs. And you move your staff to where the problem is, where the need is. Am I right, Dr. Leclerc?
Absolutely.
Okay, so it's not a perfect system. But their vision right now is that this is going to cover the special ed needs. It's going to cover the social emotional needs of the students. And then what Dr. Leclerc really pushed back on me about in our, um, finance meeting is reminding us that she needs that flexibility to move staff where the need is. And we agreed, you know, that is, that is her purview. So Megan, you want to do something?
Yeah, I just wanted to add in that it just, it, it, the, the framing of the whole thing, it sounds like we're saying eliminate something else so you can add paras. Or, for example, and I, and I don't want to speak for Ben, but what we're, I think what I'm saying, and what Ben is maybe also saying is like, we're saying add it on right now. And I know what, this is a big ask to the city, this budget increase. And I get that there's reasons why that is uncomfortable at a lot of levels and is not ideal. But like, what would it look like? And is that a possibility to add? This is not in any way against the budget that's there or, or altering what's already being asked for. Can we add three more? And again, hearing in this like, that three paras are like the salary of one special education teacher. Is there room for us to put an amendment on this and add some more support into the schools? I don't know, I don't want to speak for Ben, but that's sort of what I'm, I'm not saying take away a special education teacher. I would never, like, we need those, that, that need has been made extremely clear. But do we maybe need to ask for a little bit more?
Lori?
I hate to say it again, we need to ask for a lot more for public education. Not just in East Hampton, all over the country, outside of the country. There are a lot of asks and they're not being answered. I started tonight by saying, why don't we have language for younger grades? It would be wonderful to have all these things. But I also know in this city and in other places, the more you raise taxes, then people are also going to be extremely concerned. I'd like to know from the mayor, um, we, we have all of these shocks now, pot chops, and we were supposed to be seeing more money from that for education. And I really haven't seen that. I know you've alluded to it at different times and it's going for different things. But can't we see more of that for public education?
It's a, it's very difficult to use cannabis money for an operating budget in any part of the city. Uh, and that said, the education money that we have used cannabis on has been educational as far as risk and wellness as it pertains to the use of cannabis and drugs.
Can we use the cannabis money in another part of the city? And then what you're using for in another part of the city? Maybe we could get that money back into public education because we don't have enough. We can talk about three paras equalling one special ed teacher. We can talk about needs everywhere else. But I know what you deal with, Mayor, and if you raise taxes, people are going to get extremely angry. But we have to look for creative ways to get money back into public schools.
That's great. And I, I, so one, I, I would say to that, the money back into public schools using one time money is foolish. It's a Band-Aid. And cannabis money is not forever. Our biggest cannabis money maker, INSA, is about done with their host community agreement. And that money goes down every single year. Also, public education was not the only department, actually very little impact on education compared to planning, compared to police and fire, compared to what was going on and what goes on with the library and the support that they give to people who are changing careers and need to access things. So they can maybe join the cannabis industry or something about the cannabis industry has replaced them. The traffic in certain areas is very hazardous to schoolchildren as well as other pedestrians all around INSA in particular. I, 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 you know, sure, it, it, I understand. I was in education for 20 plus years. And the formulas stink, especially if you're not a gateway city, but you still face the same issues like the SEL. Um, and getting those, those positions and more guidance counselors. And I, I don't want to say, I mean, I do appreciate all the feedback. I do appreciate from the parents and I'm glad we're having this interaction. But that, that said, I, I'm also not going to sit here and say, I feel bad or I feel sorry. This is a balance in the budget. And the school committee, right? I'm going to abstain from this vote because I always do on this budget because I'm the one who sees it on the other side. And if this school committee feels there are a certain amount they want to ask for, then you should do it. And it's my job to balance it out across the city. But I would also say there are things, it's very frustrating to hear people talk about, you know, increases of what paras are getting or they're not getting. Paras are part of a larger union that negotiate directly with the school department. The city has nothing to do and, and that's fine. That's just a fact. And, and to say that teachers are stressed out and whatnot, I agree. And that was a part of their negotiation. That unit also includes para professionals and what they get paid. We just negotiated a pretty rich contract for the teachers, n- n- not because they were demanding and unrealistic and ba, ba, ba. And unions are bad because they deserved it. And you know what? The retired teachers, they deserve an increase too. But it's not, I, I have a hard time saying it takes away from children. These are expenses that are balanced in the school budget. It is not because I don't like children. It is not because Superintendent Leclerc doesn't care about, um, children in special ed. I, I will also say, and, and Sarah, it was very interesting to say, to hear it from Sarah. But there is a very well documented trend in public education to, to switch away from adding a para to solve a, a problem, whether that is behavioral, whether that is not, you know, a beginning teacher. Because paras, the, the expertise paras bring to the classroom, like, let's be honest, when do they have time for something more than training? They, they don't. Like in Holyoke, when I was, um, the chief of people's services, we created and partnered with HCC and Mount Holyoke to make a path for para professionals to get their bachelor's and initial training and even a master's. I mean, we talk about real solutions, that's what it is. A, a teacher and a para, very realistically, and professional development can be spot trained and gap skills can be filled in. But to, to bring them to where they want to be, a lot of them do things on their own to do that. But, but let's be clear. If, if the point is to increase teachers and the diversity of educational staff in our schools, then let's really work on that. Like, I would like to see 80 some odd people at every finance committee for the school for the rest of the year. It is very scary. And I know you have, everybody on this call has so much to do and we're all stressed out. And it's scary when you see this budget and it's hard to parse it out. I myself had questions about the teacher to student ratio. I didn't understand where those numbers came from. There are other things that we can do with this budget. But a lot of what we do with the budget is driven by parents and the concerns we heard today and concerns rightfully so by the union. There's a lot to balance. So I, I would just, you know, not, it, it's getting late anyways. Um, the school committee should pass the budget they feel is best for the school while listening to the experts who have, who have been dealing with the, all these different pressures, you know, all these different pressures, and they're seeing what happens to the kids. And if public school is underfunded, which I certainly agree to, um, I agree, so is social emotional learning outside of the public schools. I see public schools just like police. They get dumped if you don't know where to do something, if you don't know where to put it. You put it in the police or you put it in schools. And our schools are more and more like clinics. And that's not fair to teachers, it's not fair to superintendents, it's not fair to parents. It's very unfair to those kids, very unfair. So that's the soapbox for tonight. But I would, I guess an ending, I would encourage the school district, the school committee to pass the budget they feel most comfortable with. But I would, I guess an ending, I would encourage the school district, the school committee to pass the budget they feel most comfortable with. Regardless of how it stacks up against my budget letter or different expectations. Or, or different budgets that are beginning to be presented in, um, our budget meetings for this, um, for other city departments. Thanks for the, thanks for listening. And I'm also happy to continue the conversation. Either I keep writing a statement to kind of try to address all of the emails. Also very happy to have separate from any scheduled public meeting, a, a forum that somehow isn't a big enough place where it can be in person and on Zoom and whatnot and talk through these, these things very specifically. So. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
So Megan, you had asked, um, are we going to amend the budget? And I'm asking you, are you proposing an amendment to the budget? Because if we did, we would have to vote on the budget with the amendment. And if that did not pass, then we would vote on the budget as is. But I, I don't know what you were intending when you were asking.
That's a good question. I, I know it's getting late, but, um, I would be curious to hear from the other school committee members about, you know, if there's an amendment, if we're talking like what, what we'd be talking about. What is useful to the school heading into? Um, I think Ben's framing of this is like, this is kind of an emergency for the next couple of years. Um, and I, I so appreciate what Mayor LaChapelle just shared and the context of all of that and the, the urging to just to pass what is needed. And I do want the, the experts on this meeting to tell us what, what is needed. What do you need? Dr. Claire, what do you need? What can we do for the, for the school and the kids? What do we need to pass?
Well, you know, catch me off guard here, but. So here's, here's my initial thoughts. We're coming forward with really a seven point nine one percent budget, which I think is an awful lot to ask of the community, of the, the city council and the mayor. So, um, I don't want to be too greedy. I think if you were on the finance subcommittee, you know that in other iterations of this budget, we were up around nine percent or so. And we really, we really tried to break it out into separate pieces so that the mayor and the city council would know specifically. You know, it's a two point one percent for, um, most of our, you know, our discretionary costs, our staffing, our payroll, that sort of thing, our supplies. But then we have this transportation piece and we have this tuition piece that they're not one time expenses. As the mayor pointed out, you know, they are going to be ongoing. So this is going to significantly impact our budget going forward. And I want to be mindful of that because, you know, the mayor didn't mention this, but, uh, you know, I think it's fair to say that we try to be good teammates with all of the other departments in the city. And I know that there are also some other big asks in the city of East Hampton as well. Um, we're not the only department in the city that's probably looking for more money. And I want to be mindful of. I also want to be mindful as the superintendent that we have asked the community to invest an awful lot in our new school building, which, you know, we're moving into. So I, I feel, um, you know, there's a part of me and, and the mayor will probably agree to this. I'm always going to ask for more money. I've told her that I'm always going to ask for more. But, you know, I do feel that we, as a school department, have, um, have kind of gone to the well a lot with the new building. You know, the new, the new building is a big chunk of change to ask the taxpayers in East Hampton for. Um, and I feel the seven point nine percent budget is a big ask of the mayor and the city council. And I'm, I'm very hopeful that they will see the reasoning that we've put forward for that. That being said, I guess I go back to, um, what is the problem you're trying to solve for? You know, if it is, um, you, if you're talking about three para educators to assist in five first grade classrooms, what are you hoping that is the problem that they're going to solve for? If it's a social emotional issue that you're concerned about, which is what I've heard from people. I think I've already articulated that, um, we have specialists that will be on site in the building that will be able to assist with that. If it's special education support for students, that's not the same thing as a classroom para. So that's a different ask. So, um, you know, a classroom para at the kindergarten level is working with all of the children in the classroom under the direction of the teacher. So I don't know if that's the model you're trying to replicate among five first grades or if you're looking for special education or SEL support. I guess I'm trying to ascertain what the problem is that you're trying to solve for before I can, uh, feel like I have a grasp on answering the question.
I think the way you've just described it, um, you're, we're talking more about classroom paras. And thank you for that clarification. That's really helpful as someone who's like just diving into all of this and, and getting it. I think that is a long lines of what I'm hearing from the parents. And it's, you know, just an interesting point. I totally hear you. And as a taxpayer in East Hampton, like totally hear you. But it's interesting that we have, you know, well, we're down to sixty three now because it's, we're getting long. But, you know, we had a hundred parents here asking us with these, with their signs up, like they want more money spent here at the school. So.
I get it. So do I, but.
Yeah, I know. I know. I absolutely know. It's not, it's not easy. So I just, I really don't want my questions to be interpreted wrong. I'm a huge supporter. I think this budget has come so far. I, I know that this district is doing a great job. I just am trying to get at like, do we need even more? And that's just, that's my only point here. And I thank you for your, um, your explanation. But yes, I think I mean classroom paras.
Cindy, did you want to talk? I don't want to.
No, I'm. I'm just trying to wrap my head around where, what we're proposing and where we're going.
I, you know, so I guess, um.
Dale raised her hand and wanted to weigh in.
Go ahead, Dale. Go ahead. I'll let you weigh in, Dale.
I found this whole discussion really, really fascinating. I, I've literally been hanging on every word. And, um, I hope this is helpful. What I'm going to say is what, I've read an awful lot of those letters too. I haven't seen all of them, but a number of them was, were copied my way as well. And, and, and what I heard families advocating for is a level service budget. That services for kids was, was not eroded from what was, um, offered this year. And I think if you asked anyone on the leadership team, we believe that next year's budget improves services to kids. And we did that by using the grant and revolving funds strategically to add those things that we felt were the highest priorities. And I don't know if that's helpful for me to say it, but, um, I, I don't, and I'd be interested to hear if, um, not to put you on the spot again, Alison, but if you would agree with me. But what we've talked about as a leadership team is that we believe that services to students will be improved next year.
I agree. And I think that's some of the strategic changes we've made. You know, um, shifting from a library, um, para educator who is fabulous to a librarian is going to improve the education around the library standards for those students. So, you know, that's one example. Having a, a science instructor, having more special education, more SEL. I think that we've made very strategic moves to improve or grow services. Could we do more? Absolutely. As, you know, Lori said, we could do a foreign language program. But we're, we're really, you know, we had a fixed amount of money. We had COVID dollars, which really needed to be, um, there were some, some boundaries around COVID dollars that we were mindful of. So I, I think that's where we feel, um, our plan has merit. I, I think we feel strong in our plan going forward. And I, I really, you know, I, I will say it again. I think it's a big ask of the city. I'm aware of the big ask that we're making and, um, but I also feel as though we can't skimp on the transportation piece either at this point in time, moving into this new school. So that's where I'm landing on it.
The other thing that I think we've done, um, is to start to grapple with a reduced enrollment, which all of the projections for the new building suggested is going to continue into the future for a good number of years, ten years. And, and really thinking hard about where we could, um, scale back slightly, knowing that it's an eventuality down the road. If we believe the projections that the UMass group did, um, relative to what, um, the population, what, what direction the population, school age population will go in for the next 10 years.
Oh, wait, sorry, Lori.
Dale, I would like to thank you for all you have done for this district and you put everything so succinctly tonight. And as you always have done, and I truly appreciate it. And what you say about the enrollment diminishing, I feel that as a district, if we work to make East Hampton Public Schools special, it can be with a dual lang, a dual language program. It can be looking to, um, put other creative programs into place. We can increase our enrollment, even though the population may be dwindling because parents will want their kids to come back here instead of choicing out to other districts or going to private schools. And, um, I've said it before in these committee meetings, I've been an educator for more than thirty years. I've taught multiple grades. I've taught in public and private schools. But I am very proud at what we are doing here in East Hampton. So I know it's very hard to work with this budget and I feel that I've listened, I've read the concerns of parents. But what happens in East Hampton a lot, what's happened more during the pandemic? Because we get so many more people in these meetings because it's easy from the comfort of your homes to attend. That there, um, then social media gets involved and certain parents jump on. I, I'm not saying it in a negative way, but the bandwagon, like with all your masks and signs. And you all have the same message and it comes to us over and over again in the emails. Sometimes you're not listening to a wider perspective. So the fact that we have somebody now who specializes in social emotional learning is more valid than having a bunch of paras in different classrooms. I value paras. I work with them every day. But what Dr. Leclair and her leadership team has done with the finance committee, with the budget that we have is to put the money into the most worthwhile areas right now with what we have to deal with. So I hope next year, when we're talking about a budget, that parents are listening and you want more language opportunities for your kids. Because if you start writing the emails, maybe we'll get it. So I'm not saying that your concerns are invalid, but we have to think outside of the needs. It's like when people were concerned because their kids couldn't play basketball or parents didn't want their kids to be masked. We hear you, but we're trying to look for the good of the whole community. So I just had to say that.
So I, I want, I think we need to start wrapping this up and decide to vote on this. This is what we, um, proposed, and I think we need to move to a vote. Maren?
As the finance chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the budget that we have proposed tonight with the fixed and unfixed costs, the fixed, unfixed costs of being a two point one percent increase. And, uh, I'm at this point forgetting the exact number for the fixed costs, five percent roughly, in order for our school budget to be able to move forward, uh, with the best plans that we've been able to set forward and our leadership team developed to date.
Do we have a second?
I need you to actually say the total because there wasn't, there was an error last year, um, on the city side. And, and remember we had to revote. So, um, do you want me to read to you what the total is? Bottom line of the budget?
I'm just looking for it right here. So I am, so do you want the total budget increase?
The, the eighteen million, yep.
Yep. Okay. Um, so I wouldn't proposing. I am proposing that we approve a FY twenty three budget in the amount of eighteen million, four hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars. Um, and that includes the, uh, one point three million in unfixed costs and the, um, just lost the line. I'm sorry.
The one point three, um.
Sorry, the one point three is the total amount increase of the budget from over last year. That's right.
Can I just say something really? Uh, there was maybe a tiny bit more discussion on the table. Cause I, I didn't know if Megan's question of the amendment got resolved yet or whether or not we were going to actually articulate that. Or does that come after the original?
I think we need to, mayor?
Um, uh, may I, I, I know we have a motion on the table. Um, and, and it's not necessarily an amendment, but chair, would you entertain, um, a, a motion to not close the public hearing and vote on this, um, in the future? I mean, I don't know if it needs to be the next city council, but we could have a special meeting. So all the concerns by the school committee and now the public, given, given all this new information can be thoroughly addressed and we could, like, continue public hearing and, and get to a vote at that next public hearing. I'm just afraid that there's a lot of information that we've presented tonight and it's nine, 10. Um, so maybe people who had questions had to put, put kids to bed or had to go to bed themselves. Um, and they would have had questions. So to be succinct, I, I ask for the public hearing to be continued, um, and, um,
You mean the vote, the vote to be delayed?
Yep. Yes, please. To, uh, con, to consideration. Yeah.
So the mayor is making a motion to delay the vote till later dates to have more discussion.
And so to, just to make sure I'm understanding, so this same two point one percent that Maren just read nicely, that would be still the, um, budget we are discussing, the proposed budget. And we would be like thinking about if we're going to go forward with that motion or if we're going to make an amendment. It would be the same sort of discussion we're having right now. We would just delay the actual vote?
Yes. I'm sorry, Matt. I, I should have like, I'm sorry, Cindy.
No, no, that was, that was, we're trying to understand what you were talking about.
Yeah. So, so I'm, uh, what I'm suggesting is we had a lot of explanation of why things are the way they are. I mean, Sarah's been on and off the, the call. Um, this is an important budget. I mean, it is every year, but because of COVID, um, you know, I, I think that a good thought process, what, rather than honestly put a rush or wait on new members of the school. Uh, board that we should put the vote off. We, you continue the public. Board that we should put the vote off. We, you continue the public hearing and then put the vote off until that public hearing is concluded.
We don't have another school committee until after the city council is supposed to be having your presentation and voting at the city council level on April 9th. So.
I would ask for a special meeting.
So one earlier than?
Yep.
I would just like to chime in that I'm comfortable getting the job done tonight if that is, you know, if that's possible.
So let me be a little more direct. I'm not entirely sure. We are conforming to our charter section five dash two A and B with proper notice to the public around the budget. I honestly, or the way we've always done is that the publishing of the budget school was included in the ad that goes in the day after I give the budget to the city council. But the timeline in five dash two specifically for the school committee budget indicates something else.
And that something else is what?
At least seven days before the meeting at which the school committee is scheduled to vote on its final budget request, the school committee shall cause to be published in a local newspaper, generally a general summary of its posed, its proposed budget. The summary shall specifically indicate any major variations from the current budget and the reasons for such changes. It shall further indicate the time and places at which complete copies of the proposed budget are available for, by examination by the public and the date, time and place, not less than seven nor more than 14 days following such publication, when a public hearing will be held by the school committee on the proposed budget. The school committee shall not take its final vote on its proposed budget until all persons who desire to be heard concerning the budget proposal have had an opportunity to be heard.
So I'm looking at this and I'm trying to understand it. So the public was allowed to hear. We had a public hearing on the budget where we presented to the people what we're proposing. And the vote happened within the, would happen within the regular meeting. That's the way we've always done it. And I'm trying to understand what it is you're saying. You're saying that we, we presented it tonight, but we can't vote. Is that what you're saying? Because they haven't had enough, the public hasn't had enough time to think about it?
Seven days ago, or eight days ago, did we publish an ad in a local newspaper with the general summary of the proposed budget?
We posted, according to Sue, we posted a legal notice two weeks ago. And it's been, the, the actual budget document's been available since last week.
And was that in the ad?
Yes.
So my understanding?
And has everybody been heard?
Yes. Yes.
We had members on it reporting. I mean, I hate to be difficult about this, but this is really.
No other hands were raised.
Megan had a question and that was noticed by another member of the school committee.
Megan had a question?
I, I'm, I personally am going to abstain for, like, because I do, but.
Okay.
Mayor, can I bring something up publicly, please?
Up to the chair. Yes.
I would like everyone to know right now, I'm receiving threatening text messages and I will have that number traced. Somebody who is texting me, telling me I must relay this message. Or, I mean, these, this is horrific. And this is what this has come to. And I just want to acknowledge that I don't do anything that isn't to the public knowledge. But somebody cannot be texting me who refuses to identify themselves, giving me an ultimatum that I have to ask you specific questions, Mayor. So I will report this to the police and have this traced, but this is not okay. And it's somebody on this call right now. I will not read what this person is telling me I need to read right now to you.
I'm sorry that's happening to, to you. I, I am very disappointed.
I am too. Okay. So, so legally we covered all the bases and, and Mayor, I think you said Megan asked a question. She wasn't allowed to ask a question. I, I don't, I, you've asked many questions. Have we cut you off at some point?
No, I certainly asked a lot of questions. I have to be honest, I don't know, I'm not sure I'm totally following what's happening and what this all means. So just, I'll put that out there.
Okay. So just for the record, you have not been, we haven't refused to listen to you. I believe everybody's weighed in tonight. And the committee's been able to ask questions. Is that our understanding?
I think the only thing left on the table is Ben had just said, you know, are we going to make a decision about that amendment? Or are we just gonna agree to go forward with the motion that Maren, excuse me, reported?
What I believe we need to do is see if we are going to pass this budget and take the vote. I don't hear an amendment on the table. I did hear a motion for a for approving this budget. I didn't hear seconds. So I need to know if this motion that Maren has made is seconded. If there's no seconds, there's no votes. It's a very unusual night.
I just feel that it should be seconded by somebody on the finance committee who has been through all of those meetings. And Madam Chair, I, I believe a chair can also second. So I'm just saying that. That's why I'm not.
Okay. I can. And I will, because I think we may need to make this decision. I think we need to, to approve or, you know, put this budget down, but we need to make some decisions and we need to cover it off pretty quickly, I think. We spent a lot of time working on it and talking about it, and I don't think we're going to get anywhere different tonight. So I'm going to second Maren's motion to approve the budget. And if, is there any more discussion before I take a roll call vote? Okay.
I got one, I got one thing, just really fast, last thoughts. I, I feel like there were a lot of fantastic plans made for the new school before COVID and, and COVID kind of crashed into everything and caused some real problems for, you know, our best laid plans. And it's, it's unfortunate that we're not going to find a way to bring in a little something extra, because I think that when it comes to the condition of the classroom experience for, for children in, in East Hampton, I don't think it's where it, it totally needs to be. And I think some of these classrooms could use some help and I, and no teachers are working very hard and I feel, you know, a little bit disappointed that we can't find a way to make that happen. But I, I do also feel fully cognizant of the money realities here. And I also feel fully cognizant of the incredible work that's being done to make this thing come together. Like the, the budget construction was like watching something beautiful come together. I feel really glad to have experienced that. You know, it's both. I, I feel really grateful for the work that's been done and I feel like it's real, it's unfortunate that we can't find a way to improve that just a little.
Okay. Any more discussion? Okay, Mira Lashapow?
Abstain.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, I.
Megan?
Um. Megan Harvey, I.
Laurie?
Laurie Garcia, I.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, I.
And Cindy Kuzensky, I. All right. That was a tough one. That was a really tough one. Budgeting really is. And I agree, it's really hard because we're, we are entering a new building and we don't fully know everything we need. But I do hope and I do think that the team has come up with the best budget that they can right now. So we're going to move on. Thank you, everybody, for your patience. Okay. So do we have any subcommittee updates? I know it's late.
Yes, we need to bring stuff. Yes. For our first reading. So.
Let's see. Finance subcommittee minutes. So Megan can read those. And you're saying we have policy to approve first readings? Got it. I see it. Okay.
Is that what you want me to do now? Megan doesn't need to read the minutes, right?
No, the minutes.
That's what you just said, Megan was going to read.
The minutes have been submitted, policy has been submitted. Okay. I was going to have Megan read them, but they're there.
Yes, I would like to move for, to approve for first reading changes recommended by MASC labeled AC non-discrimination. Ben, can you second, please?
Sorry, second.
Okay. Mayor?
I.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, I.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, I.
Laurie?
Laurie Garcia, I.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, I.
And Cindy Kuzensky, I.
I would like to move for a first reading, ACR, non-discrimination, including harassment and retaliation. To include recommended changes by MASC as presented.
Second.
Okay. Mayor?
Mira Lashapow, I.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, I.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, I.
Laurie?
Laurie Garcia, I.
Maren?
Cindy Kuzensky, I.
I would like to move for a first reading, ACAB sexual harassment to approve changes recommended by MASC.
Mayor?
Well, I'll second that.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. Thank you. Thank you so much. Mayor?
I.
Okay. Ben?
Ben Hershey, I.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, I.
Laurie?
Laurie Garcia, I.
Maren Goldstein, I.
Cindy Kuzensky, I.
I would like to move to make changes, not MASC changes, changes necessary for our district for JLCD administering medicines to students.
Oh, sorry, second. Yep.
Mayor?
I.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, I.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, I.
Laurie?
Laurie Garcia, I.
Maren Goldstein, I.
Cindy Kuzensky, I.
Okay. And two more. Also changes for our district to EE transportation. I would like to move to approve first reading.
Second.
Mayor?
Mira Lashapow, I.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, I.
Megan, Megan Harvey, I.
Laurie Garcia, I.
Maren Goldstein, I.
Cindy Kuzensky, I.
And our last addition this evening is move to approve the first reading of a recommended policy by MASC called JICK harassment of students.
Second.
Mayor?
Mira Lashapow, I.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, I.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, I.
Laurie?
Laurie Garcia, I.
Maren Goldstein, I.
Cindy Kuzensky, I. Okay. Is there another that we need to discuss?
I have one. Yes, I have a PTO update. They are running or have run a couple of fundraisers. There was a Meadow Farms fundraiser that ended yesterday. Unfortunately, I can't get you to put your orders in for that one, but there's a Silver Graphics fundraiser where kids have made artwork and their families can order their artwork on a whole bunch of different personalized items. Very cool. That ends tomorrow. If folks who are still on the call are interested in ordering, they're planning a bingo night in May. That'll take place in Nottok Park. They're also planning for Teacher Appreciation Week, which is the first week of May. And their next meeting is on April 6th at 6:30 at Maple, and they plan to have childcare. And they hope that more and more and more folks will show up every time.
Thank you. Okay. Any other, other?
Just, I will reiterate that I think it's going to be important for us to have in the near future, one of our spring meetings, a presentation that more fully flushes out the special education as well as the use of teachers and pairs in our district. So that I think that a lot of our tonight's conversation went in circles because we don't all have a full understanding of how all those different roles work and support our students. And so I think it's beyond just the special education piece. It's sort of how we are supporting our students and our teachers in this district. And I think that we need to look for that kind of a presentation so that we can feel like we didn't lose something tonight, that we are still, as Dale said, and Dr. Leclerc, we are moving forward with this budget as a increase, an improvement in our services for our students and an improvement in our school building. So I think we're looking for that kind of a presentation in the near future.
Thank you. Any other, other? Megan?
I also love to, if we can keep thinking about a tech presentation, which includes way to late, but like also other tech stuff, I'd love that at some point, too.
I'm just going to build off of what Megan just said, I mean, what Maren just said. I had mentioned CPAC a couple of times, and I know there are a couple of people who could also like to probably work in a presentation on what they could offer the district.
Hi, thank you. Any other, other? All right. So Megan, we're going to make some motions to approve minutes.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the March 8th, 2022 regular meeting.
I second that. Okay, Mayor?
Mira Lashapow, I.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, I.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, I.
Laurie?
Laurie Garcia, I.
Maren Goldstein, I.
Cindy Kuzensky, I.
Make a motion to approve the school payroll dated 3/10/2022 in the amount of $563,723.43.
I second that. Mayor?
Mira Lashapow, I.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, I.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, I.
Laurie?
Laurie Garcia, I.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, I.
Cindy Kuzensky, I.
And I'd like to make a motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated 3/10/2022 in the amount of $360,548.87.
I second that.
Mayor?
Mira Lashapow, I.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, I.
Laurie?
Laurie Garcia, I.
Megan Harvey, I.
Thank you. Maren?
Maren Goldstein, I.
And Cindy Kuzensky, I. Sorry, I switched orders. Okay. Our next meeting dates are April 12th, April 26th, May 10th, May 24th and June 14th. Can I have a motion to move into executive session? We're going to, we will not be able to invite the public into executive session and we will be adjourning from executive session. So do we have a motion to move?
I moved into executive session.
I second that.
We're ready.
We're ready. We're ready. Here.
Mira Lashapow, I.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, I.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, I.
Laurie?
Laurie Garcia, I.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, I.
And Cindy Kuzensky, I. And thank you, public. We will, thank you, everybody who came. And we will hopefully see you at our next meeting.
Recording.